Today is Monday, August 3rd, 2020, and it is 5:30 PM. We are meeting tonight via Zoom teleconference pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, Section 8, and Emergency Order 12, Section 3. Mr. Guarino, would you like to call the roll? And I wish you luck, because I think we have 50 people on.
Okay. Mr. Guarino is here. This is Johnson. Ms. Ziem.
Here.
Ms. Bishop.
Here.
Ms. Giulio.
Here.
Ms. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Raymond.
Here.
Ms. Odin.
Here.
Ms. Timmons.
Here.
Okay, we also have Dr. Mosley.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Mr. Parker. I think I saw Mr. Parker here. Okay. Dr. McKinney.
Here.
Ms. Hines.
I'm here, thank you.
Ms. Kinsella.
Here.
We have Ms. Marcia Bagley.
Here.
And Ms. Bobby Bagley.
I'm here.
And Ms. Gingrich, Ingris, I'm sorry.
Here.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. McQuilkin.
Here.
Mr. Gao.
Here.
Mr. Norris.
Here.
And we also have registered nurse, I'm sorry, I don't see your last name.
This is Lopez.
Mrs. Lopez. And did I miss anyone? Oh, go ahead, Sharon.
Ms. Coffey, Principal of Fairgrounds.
Okay.
Mr. Falsarano, Principal, Penacheck Middle School.
Okay.
And Dana.
And Gara, okay.
And Chopa, okay.
Wow, okay. Welcome, everybody. We have a big group tonight. We have on the agenda tonight one big thing, which is the reopening of schools' plan presentation. But before we get to that, we realized that at the conclusion of our last meeting, we forgot to seal the minutes of our non-public session on 7/27. So I am looking for a motion to seal those minutes.
Almost.
Okay, that was moved by Sandra. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Timmons. So seal the minutes of the 7/27 non-public. Great. Mr. Guarino, could you call the roll?
Okay, on the motion to seal the minutes, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Giulio?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries down to zero.
All right, thank you very much. I really appreciate everybody's patience on that. So with that done, let's get to the reopening plan. Thank you, everybody, for being here, everybody who worked on the task force. I read the plan this weekend, all 48 pages of it. So it's really evident that a lot of thought and hard work and cooperation went into this. So I am just really thrilled to be able to be the one to say, hey, look, we have a plan, even though I didn't work on it. And I am really happy to hand this over to Dr. Mosley, so that he can give us in the public an overview.
I just, there's so many different words. Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam President, excuse me. There's so many words, I just want to start off. But I just, there's a couple of things I wanted to just share. In addition to making sure that we That's a reminder, I didn't forget. That's a reminder to start off the meeting, Jamal, by just saying that I want to thank Nate and Keith for their work for graduation. Understanding that they were putting this, we're putting this document together and against the backdrop of their team and their administration planning a graduation for our kids. I won't know, I don't know all the names, Nate, Pete, Lisa, all of the faculty members who attended not just one graduation, but actually four graduations simultaneously in two different spots. And to pull that off, that's just amazing. So I just wanted to say thank you to those administrators and teachers and faculty and staff who organized and put that on. It was a great day. Mother Nature was cooperative, and just thank you. I also, we recognize that our families, some of our families were not able to attend because of their medical conditions and pre-existing conditions, and they were concerned about COVID-19. So I also want to take an opportunity to thank Pete Johnson and his team for televising it live as these graduations were taking place. And that was a nice opportunity for our community members to observe the graduations during that Saturday. So I just wanted to put that out there. So let's talk about reopening. I think we've embarked on something that's never been done before. I wanted to just thank Sharon Giulio, Tara, all the directors, Lisa. I can't go on, I can go on thanking people, but I think people just want us to get right to it. But I said that we have been pressed time and time again. I've asked the administrators and directors to go above and beyond, and they have not failed. And that's not five days a week, it's seven days a week. So this plan and this opportunity.
I'm just going to jump in here and ask everybody to remember to mute themselves. Thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Mosley.
I think it was, someone's phone was ringing. This plan is organic. It's not a contract. It's not something that's set in stone. It's something that is organic. It's something that's, as we start to embark on our reopening, it is an opportunity for us to have a plan with reflection and precision and being strategic as we start to reopen our schools in this fashion. So at this point, Tara, I'm going to just ask, Tara's actually going to project the presentation. I asked that we go through the presentation. There are several speakers of the presentation. Once we're done with the presentation, we'll open up for questions for the board. And depending on the question, different individuals may respond. All right? Go ahead, Tara.
Are you seeing it?
Yep, I can see it. Next slide. So we, perfect. So what is the theme of this? Be flexible, be adaptable, and be aware that local epidemiology is going to drive how we approach all of our decisions. We typically, we are structured, but in this environment, in this pandemic, we need to be flexible, adaptable, and aware that this can change at any moment, given the number of cases that could be out there. We also want to have the ability to be flexible in the way that we're able to use data to move from different models, either it's Model 3, Model 2, or Model 1. All of this is very, very important as we start to think about it. And for those of you who are joining us the first time, we will give a brief overview of what each of those models look like and definition. So what was the charge of the reopening task force? The public out there, I'm not going to read every single PowerPoint slide, because then that becomes redundant. What I will do is I talk around the slides, and then if you want to read the slides, you certainly can. This presentation is also posted on our website as well for the public that want to follow along. We wanted to examine the safest conditions for students and staff to return to school, analyzing data recommendations from current sources, whether it's the CDC, Public Health, or the New Hampshire School Nurse Association, and understanding what those guidelines feel and look like. Those guidelines change as we start to find out more about our, more about the COVID-19. Provide a rationale for the selection of the reopening models for the national public schools, and really make sure that we do it in a timely manner to prepare.
Hi, I'm Sharon. Our reopening task force had 26 members. And as you can see, if you look there, from all different aspects of our community, really, Board of Education, central administrators, special educators, operations staff, students, parents, communication, nurses, ELL, building principals, union leader, teachers, and athletic director, and representatives from HHS City and police. And in addition to these 26 people, there were 174 members of the 17 subgroups. And we have to be grateful to all of them. Thank you. Next slide. There were three, over the summer, when we first met, we had questions for all of the subgroups to answer based on all three models. And we started out with Model 1, which was a full return to school, Model 2, which was a hybrid, and Model 3, which was completely remote. And as of earlier in July, per the Department of Public Health in Nashua, we needed to eliminate Model 1. It was not, the epidemiology did not allow for us to consider going back to school fully. Thank you.
This is our timeline, all right? And our timeline, we started this journey, and I'd say around March 27. And we, I'm happy to say that we, we put this project to, we put the project to a close as of Friday. And what I mean by last Friday, we delivered the complete report to the board on Friday, and then we posted it over the weekend for the public. This just highlights how much work we put into it, highlights some of the things and meetings we had. We also were able to get a lot of different data from different various resources, our public health officials, the mayor's office, you know, the nurses. And it's just, has been a prodigious undertaking. And this really captures our, what I would consider our scoreboard or our game plan in this approach to making sure that we had a reopening plan for our schools. Data. Whoa, so where did we get our data from? I think we've, I think my faculty and myself, I think we're experts now in writing surveys. I think we sent out numerous surveys from different constituents within our communities, teachers, parents, stakeholders, students. And we certainly got some feedback on what they were looking for for reopening. We also had subgroup data when we met as a task force, all 28 members of us. We started to look at and answering critical questions. And all of that information and data is in our website, on our website, and the results. Reopening Task Force generated recommendations on the Model 2 and Model 3. You know, certainly when we talk about, about our models, we talk about what recommendations we're looking for for Models 2 and 3, we considered everything. Nothing was off the table. We wanted to make sure that we left no stone unturned. But we also wanted to make sure that we approached this methodically, strategically, and making sure that we vetted every option for our kids to get educated in the best environment moving forward. And finally, you know, at some point, you know, during this meeting, I know there's been some changes, but we're looking for the board's support around making some modifications, and we'll explain a little later, around our school calendar, so we still can continue the work. This is only one step to a larger, a larger journey into remote, into our hybrid model of opening our schools.
Hi, everyone. This is Stacy Hines, Director of Communications. And Dr. Mosley asked me to speak to this particular slide about the feedback that was generated from the, I believe there were 17 subgroups representing all school district and school operations. And definitely, there were some themes that came out from the feedback, and we've highlighted them here. Health of students and staff during pandemic, definitely a concern about how best we can follow the recommendations from Public Health about PPE, wearing of masks, and particularly social distancing, since so many of us have shared offices and classrooms in the district. Also, a lot of concern around academic equity. Certainly working with those most affected negatively by the pandemic, and certainly those who might have larger gaps than we'd like to see in achievement, in computer competency, communication skills, and certainly if there were language barriers with some of our students' families. Academic expectations, as you can imagine. Attendance grading, Google Classroom behavior, added services such as OT, PT, and speech. Just how best can we meet the demands of our students under such difficult circumstances, when, you know, so much of teaching and learning is a human endeavor, and we're just sort of now distant from each other? So great challenges there. Also, the large discussion about the schedules, for both remote and hybrid, just the logistics, particularly grouping family members in several grades, how best we could serve our families, who are trying to balance family life, academic life, and work life. And to address that, something that was, came through on, through many, I think, subgroups, as well as the one I headed up with the communications group, was we really decided to take the time, when we were starting the school year, to be very deliberate in how we supported each other and our families, to make sure they understood how working in remote should be, answer the questions that were raised this spring, give them, everyone an orientation on the Chromebooks and how to manage those. What if your Chromebook breaks? What do you do if you have a question? And also, we really wanted to help families understand how best to communicate, that two-way communication in our school district. And the whole purpose of this deliberate rollout was really to promote confidence in students, in families, and in our staff, in how we were going to function in either remote or hybrid models. And finally, we needed to address, obviously, the labor issues. We mentioned earlier about the workplace safety, and also folks' employment status. So that was the feedback that we received. Now I'm going to actually hand off to our Assistant Superintendent for Elementary, Garth.
The next slide.
Oh, I'm sorry, actually, yes, no, we're not. I skipped a slide. We're actually the why behind not going with Model 1. And as you can imagine, we've been in close contact with the City Division of Public Health and Community Services. And I believe Gina, our head nurse, is here, as well as Bobby, our division director, who can address this slide.
Thank you, Stacy. When looking at the three proposals, the school nurses work closely together with the National Health Department, and safe practices is social distancing. And the most effective way to do this is through our proposed mitigation efforts under Model 2. The delayed start with less students will support a decreased risk factor in the exposure. As stated, our confirmed numbers are significantly lower in Nashua. We're so fortunate to have Bobby Bagley, the Director of our Public Health Department in Nashua, with us this evening. Bobby, would you, do you have any additional insight to this slide?
Thank you, Gina, and thank you, everyone. The model that's been put forth in the plan, and all of the hard work that's gone into this, shows the collaboration with the school, all the partners with the best interests of the school community in mind. And so when we look at the emphasis on these mitigative efforts, the wearing of the mask, the staying at home, the washing your hands frequently, making sure the avoidance of touching the eyes, the face, the nose, and the mouth are so important. And these are key things that you have identified, you know, in your plan. And as, you know, Gina has mentioned, you know, we have to look at these things and let the Epi guide us in everything, because things are going to look very different in our urban or our rural areas, you know, comparatively, so when it comes down to that data. And so that's really important. One of the things that we did discuss today, because we're continually looking at the data, and we're following things on a very close and regular basis. And one of the things that we did notice, just the difference between last week, our total number of cases of positive in Nashville have gotten a little bit of a blip up to 12% when it was lower, it was 8% last week. And again, we look at these things because we're gauging activity, we're gauging some of these mitigative measures, and we truly believe that as the school puts these things in place, we'll continue to see these numbers stay down and have, you know, a good response to the model that's being put forth. So our why behind not going with Model 1 is because when you put large numbers of folks together, that 12% that we're seeing right now can go high really quickly. And we've seen that just with increased activity just over the summer.
Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you. Yeah, our thanks to both Gina and Bobby. Thank you very much. And now I think we are ready for Garth McKinney, our Assistant Superintendent for Elementary. If I have the order of the slides correct.
You have something, Dr. Mosley?
Yeah, I was just going to give you a little intro. But so now Dr. McKinney's our Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Ed. He's going to talk about the why, or describe the elementary hybrid model, what it looked like in our school. And then followed by Gabe Fazio, our middle school principal, who is going to talk about the hybrid model, what it looks like in our middle schools. And then lastly, it'll be our high school principal, Nate Burns, from the north, in collaboration with Keith, which is the high school principal at the south. And maybe Lisa Ingris, our athletic director, might jump into, will describe it at the high school. Thank you, Dr. McKinney, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. So at the elementary level, the hybrid is a combination of in-person instruction and online or remote instruction. Students will come into the building two days a week, either Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And Fridays will be closed for cleanings, but it'll be a day of remote instruction for both students and teachers. Assignments will be, you know, completed during, at home during the days when students are not in school. And we'll be utilizing an early release day, kind of a slow, deliberate beginning of bringing in students, making sure everyone's safe, establishing new routines, watching epidemiology, and then as the plan unfolds, hopefully building towards full days of instruction. Next slide, thank you. When we're in person with our young students, we're going to be focusing on literacy, numeracy, and social, emotional learning. I don't think there's any disagreement. We need to lay eyes on kids after the spring and evaluate where they are. We've done more work in defining specific expectations, what the district's going to do, what our building principals are going to do, teachers, students, and families. And we're going to be making consideration for family members to attend school on the same scheduled days, which will be a coordinated effort, K-12, along with transportation. Next slide, please. So a part of the deliberate approach was providing more information to families and parents. So teachers will have a open house video. They'll share the specifics around the classroom experience. We established a consistent agenda for all the schools of what that's going to look like. And included in the open house will be Chrome Tech support, what the expectations for safety, schedule, transportation, how to come and go to school, parent communication, grading. We're basically re-establishing the school district in a different way, in different shape and form. Next slide, please. So we had a subgroup of over 45 teachers, K to 12, from all grade levels and subject areas. And one of the strong themes is around professional development. It's a part of the reopening plan, includes PD days for teachers. And at the elementary level, the principals collaborated and established this schedule for those days. So each day will start with like an hour-long meeting, kind of a faculty meeting, give updates, set the purpose for the day, cultural building. Part two would be two to three hours of professional development with your coaches. One of the other pieces of feedback was more consistency, a curriculum plan, and having priorities. So we've been working on that. And then part three, the end of the day, two to three hours of teachers being able to collaborate and apply the things they learned in professional development to be ready to both start with remote instruction and then pivot to hybrid, you know, as the plan outlined. Next slide, please. Thank you. So just a reminder, remote learning doesn't mean the students are receiving the same instruction in the same manner as if they were in the school buildings. It's, I think we all felt Zoom fatigue or tech fatigue over the spring. So part of the schedule at the elementary is two days of instruction to kind of establish routines and games and things kids can do at home. It won't always be delivered electronically, but there'll be a balance between the two. And again, all these expectations are outlined in the documents that we provided in the reopening plan. Next slide, please. So when we're remote, this is what it looks like during the course of the day. We've kind of defined it a little differently, still using the early release model. We've done a better job of outlining the times and what the expectations are. And again, teachers will be offline in the afternoon to do some planning and preparation, office hours, and for collaboration. And then we've outlined it, what it looks like, K to 5, in terms of reading, writing, math, SEL, and unified arts. The next slide, please. So again, we're going to have teachers do open houses on Zoom and give an overview of the expectations and answer any questions. There was some feedback around the level of rigor and effort for classroom work in the spring, so we've worked to address that. And we're really working to focus our instruction assessment on the most important things. You know, everybody's talking about learning loss both during COVID and the summer. So we're trying to, you know, work carefully and quickly to mitigate those gaps and provide a structure and accountability for all the students. Next slide, please. With that, I'll turn things over to Mr. Falsiano from the middle school. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. McKinney. I'm sorry about being a little late on the unmuting. So inherently, we come with a little bit of a change that we need to happen at the middle school, because we do run a seven-period day, and we saw that if we were going to go to either remote and then into hybrid at an early release schedule, having seven transitions was not effective, the amount of time. So we are going to, if you see the schedule, September 8th to October 9th, remote learning and teaching. We're going to transition and have a transition week only for sixth grade. October 13th through the 16th, high school's going to be up for ninth grade as well. Sorry to jump on that, high school for you. Where the sixth grade would be coming into the building, seventh to eighth. During that week, we'll also remain remote the following week. November 20, I'm sorry, October 19th, and we do hybrid phase one. Students in school, one day per week, 25% of the population on any given day. The other 75% would be remote learning during that time. November 23rd to the 24th, remote learning and teaching days, because that's the lead into Thanksgiving break, as opposed to imbalancing having students come in the building, give some extra time for cleaning. November 30th through the 18th, again, based on epidemiology, if it allows, we're going to go to about 50% of the students coming in two consecutive days. But again, that's based on how we're doing with the epidemiology at the time. December 21st to the 23rd leads into the Christmas break. That will be all remote learning for all students. And then January 4th through 15th, again, based on the data, we would look at phasing in, again, 50% of the students, but on a longer day, so a full day. But again, that's all based on the data. We can move to the next slide, please. And the next one. So we, again, because we have seven periods, and the transitions make it more difficult to do that in a four-hour day, we are going to cut it down to four periods a day per week, rotate on a weekly basis. So you'll see in the following slide that we're going to look at, and we can actually move to the following slide. That would be great. So on odd weeks, if you will, 1 through 11, and 1 through 11, and 2 through 12, those encompass all of the remote learning piece and the phase one piece of 25%. those encompass all of the remote learning piece and the phase one piece of twenty-five percent. So, um, that is a lot of weeks, but there are different phases then. Odd weeks, we're gonna run periods one through four. Uh, even weeks, we're gonna run periods five through seven. And then because we have that odd number and we need to fill in that time, um, we're gonna use that time for some homeroom advisory or team time based on the building, uh, just to build some camaraderie with each other, smoke for. The time of our day, we're gonna run in hour increments with five hour, five minutes, rather in between classes, if you will, to transition to Zoom, uh, classes. So run eight to nine, nine oh five to ten oh five, ten, ten to eleven, ten. Have a time in there for some lunch, about a half an hour, then another five minutes for transition, and then go eleven fifty to twelve forty-three. So it is a hair under an hour for, um, that period for team time. And then at one o'clock, giving teachers time to, to decompress a bit, reload. Um, one o'clock to two forty-three, we would go into, uh, office hours, if you will. If you can go to the next slide, please. Monday through Thursday, teachers have office hours, again, one to two forty-three, uh, just there for their students to answer any questions, any follow-up from class time, if you will. On Fridays, we're gonna allow teachers to have some PLC time because it's, it's important for them to make sure they're on the same page with each other, really work with each other, uh, to iron out any difficulties they've had in their, their career. Uh, next, next phrase, please. So phase one, uh, is that post-remote getting going phase, that priming phase, if you will. So we're gonna bring in twenty-five percent of the students any given day, Monday through Thursday, on an early release. If you can go to that, please. So again, it works on an every-other-week schedule. Um, and again, starting October thirteenth through the sixteenth, that week, only sixth graders would be entering the building. Um, we had had planned, minus the epidemic, to just bring sixth grade in for a couple of days at the beginning. I think it was a one day, potentially two, to get them accustomed to school. That's hard for any transition, and now that we know how it's gonna be even harder for them to transition, um, in small cohorts. So that will be through the sixteenth, starting October nineteenth. Again, we're gonna stay with that every-other-week or that odd-even schedule, where the odd weeks, students will go to periods one through four, uh, twenty-five percent of the time. Um, and then even weeks, periods five, six, and seven. And again, that team slash advisory slash homeroom. While twenty-five percent of students are in the building, again, the seventy-five percent are gonna be at home, working remotely. We're working on how we're gonna. Next slide, please. Uh, this is just another way to look at it. It's just another rubric to look at how we're gonna do this. And juxtaposed with the time of day that those are gonna occur, so, um, to, in a different view, certainly, you can, you can look at this for a different rubric. Next one, please. Again, Monday through Thursday, office hours one to two forty-three. Um, and Fridays, it's PLC time for teachers, one to two forty-three. We are not gonna be in session, obviously, on Fridays. All, all students are gonna be remote on Friday. We're gonna be using that Friday time for RTI time. So, uh, that response intervention is for students who maybe weren't able to get on for a particular day and need some catch-up time, um, larger office hours for teachers during the school day to answer any questions, make up for anything that was going on, um, for larger questions. If we can go to the next remote. Okay, phase two, fifty percent of the students come in. And inherently, because we're having larger groups come in, we're gonna do another little shift of how it looks. Um, still delivering between eight and twelve forty-three, but now we're gonna have two different groups, and we could see that as we go into the next slide. And there'll be group one and group two. Um, group one will come in back-to-back, Monday and Tuesday. Group two will come in Wednesday and Thursday. Um, again, all students are gonna be remote on Friday. We'll be using that Friday for RTI time. Um, and this is this phase, November third through December eighteenth. Even though there's fifty percent of the people in the building, we're still gonna be on the early release schedule. Here again, this is how it looks, uh, periods one through four meet on even week, uh, Mondays and Wednesdays. And because they're two different groups, so the, uh, Tuesdays and Thursdays, periods five through seven, there's a lunch in there, and then we're gonna do an advisory or homeroom, um, during eleven fifty to twelve forty-three, block to round out, uh, the block schedule. Same thing applies here during the phase two, office hours one to two forty-three. PLCs for teachers, one to two forty-three on Friday. Next, thank you. Phase three, um, it's fifty percent of students, a full day. And again, that is based on the epidemiology at the time, um, on the data, we can go into that. How we look, this would be January to June, and then certainly, we don't know exactly what January to June is gonna look like. Um, it's the same schedule as phase two, longer class times. We might shift on, if we are able to go to full days, we might shift again back to one periods, one through seven, but we're not quite sure yet, simply because we will have fifty percent of the students at home. And again, making those transitions are difficult, uh, something to be looked at in the future. Um, that's Monday through Thursday, Friday being, uh, at home time for RTI, and teachers will PLC in the afternoon and during their planned period. And then I believe that's the end. I'm gonna pass that off to either Nate or Keith for the high school.
Yeah, I'll take over. Thank you, Gabe. All right, uh, so we started by kind of simulating or, or mimicking what the middle schools and elementary schools are doing, um, and starting with remote, um, and then moving into a hybrid model, um, as we move forward, um, based on the epidemiology. We wanted to keep consistent, like, um, Dr. McKinney and Gabe had spoken about it, also just to make it easier for families. Um, so I'll kind of go through what each of the phases might look like for us at the high school level. Next slide, please. Um, so to begin with, we'd start, um, September eighth through October ninth. All students would begin working remotely. Um, teachers would be providing direct instruction to our students, uh, for a set time each day, uh, Monday through Thursday. And then, much like the middle schools, Friday, uh, classes would not meet. Teachers would be available for office hours, making appointments for students, following up, reaching out to parents and families, uh, for students that may be struggling or might need some extra assistance. Um, they would also be planning, uh, for the following week, uh, posting their learning expectations and any planned assignments, um, so that way their students can plan their week. Uh, families can be prepared as far as when their students need to be working and, and what they're, um, gonna be accomplishing over that timeframe. We thought we would take advantage of being remote, and, um, a lot of the, uh, research has shown that students work better later, especially high school students. Uh, so we've modified our schedule a little bit. We are gonna still stick with the traditional seven twenty to two oh three that we used at high school. Uh, but we thought we would use the mornings from seven twenty to eight fifty-five as office hours. And then we would start our first class at nine o'clock, um, and they'd be fifty-five-minute sessions for each of the students. So block one would go from nine to nine fifty-five, block two would start at ten, block three at eleven. We built in a lunch, uh, for both students and, um, teachers. And then block four would go twelve thirty to one twenty-five. And then the remainder of the day, um, for our staff and students would be, um, an additional office hour and an opportunity for teachers to connect and work one-on-one with some of the kids or in smaller groups. Uh, just like the middle schools, we'd be going to phase one, um, hybrid teaching after that and learning. Twenty-five percent of our students would come, and we'd also be following an early release schedule. Um, we wouldn't, if you go to the next slide, we would have to, um, go back to our traditional early-release schedule just because of transportation, um, so classes would start at seven twenty in the morning. We wouldn't have E-block, um, as we traditionally don't during any early-release schedule. Um, and the students would end their day at eleven forty-four. We would do, uh, grab-and-go lunch or some, some lunch, um, that works, either bringing them to the classroom. We haven't quite worked that out yet, but that's one of the details that we'll be working on as we move forward. Um, but students would begin in this phase, um, October thirteenth and go through November twentieth. Uh, much like the middle schools, we'd have our transitions, our freshmen coming in on October thirteenth for that week. They would get an orientation, and then grades ten through twelve would begin, um, with the hybrid, uh, learning on October nineteenth. Again, teachers are providing direct instruction to twenty-five percent of their students each day, Monday through Thursday. Students are gonna attend one day per week in person. Um, and we try to line that up as best we can, um, K to twelve, to make sure that students are from one family are going to school the same day as their siblings, um, just to make it easier for parents and, uh, for childcare and, and things like that. Um, and then from two oh three, since we're using the early release, twelve thirty to two oh three, um, teachers would hold office hours again to meet with students that are not in school each of those days, um, to provide extra help, reach out with parents, continue their planning and prep. Um, so here's just kind of a modified, um, day. So we'd have twenty-five percent of the capacity by Alpha each of those days. Again, Fridays, those office hours, uh, classes, where classes aren't meeting. I kind of talked a little bit about this on the last, um, the week of October thirteenth, like we said, is freshman orientation. All our other grades would be remote during that time. And again, like Gabe mentioned, November twenty-third and twenty-fourth would be fully remote learning days the week of, uh, leading up to Thanksgiving recess. If everything's going smoothly, um, the epidemiology allows us to do so. We'd then enter phase two, where we'd have fifty percent of the students each day, um, following that early-release schedule that we discussed on the last slide, last couple of slides. Um, students would attend Monday and Tuesday or Wednesday and Thursday. So the two groups that Gabe mentioned earlier, um, we'd run a similar cohort group like that at the high schools. Teachers would be working and providing direct instruction to fifty percent of the kids in person, uh, Monday through Thursday. And again, Friday's still a day where, um, we wouldn't, um, have classes. Teachers could hold their office hours and work with kids, and we'd still hold that, um, twelve thirty to two oh three office hours on a daily basis for all of our students to, to access their teachers. Here's just a sample of schedule, um, that we would follow on that. And then again, um, December twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-third would be fully remote. Um, and we follow the remote schedule at nine o'clock to, um, eleven or to one thirty, um, schedule that we scheduled for our students during that time and prior to phase one. All right, again, provided everything's going smoothly, we'd move into phase three, where we'd make our, our fifty percent cohort groups go to full-day sessions. We'd be able to hopefully work with them to, um, stay through a full-class day. Classes will meet on Monday and Tuesday for group one, group two, Wednesday, Thursday. They'd go to all four of their classes. Friday would be a day where the classes would not meet, but teachers would be hosting their office hours. Um, and then at the end of the quarter, we'd revisit the plan to determine whether it's safe to move forward, um, to a hundred percent capacity in a full school week. And for now, I'm gonna pass it off to, uh, Mike McQuill, and he's gonna talk about CTE.
Good evening. Our eighteen CTE programs in Nashua North and Nashua South are extremely hands-on in nature. Um, and we offer students certifications, licensure, apprenticeships, work-based learning opportunities, um, for the students to demonstrate, uh, competency of their technical skills. So we plan on following the hybrid model that Nate just presented, um, with the high schools. However, we're proposing starting our hybrid as soon as possible when it's safe for students. We're the largest CTE center in the state, and all other centers are providing start, starting in-person instruction as soon as possible in a safe manner. Um, as I mentioned, it's challenging to meet CTE state and national competencies without some type of in-person instruction. As with the high school plan, there'll be a maximum of twenty-five stu-, uh, twenty-five percent of, uh, CTE students in the high schools at a given time. All CTE students will be assigned a day of in-person instruction by alphabet and follow the same early-release schedule of the high schools. Besides their one day of in-person instruction, the students will work remotely the remainder of the week. On Friday of each week, all CTE students will all be learning remotely. And it's important to note that the CTE programs will remain in phase one of the NSD Secondary Schools Hybrid Plan until the high school transitions to phase two. At that point, the CTE schedule will mirror that of the high schools, and everyone will be on the same, same path and same schedule. It's also important to note that this plan is for all students who will be accessing CTE in Nashua, and that includes our area students from Hollis, Milford, Alvin, and Merrimack. For this opportunity, CTE students and/or parents or guardians will be responsible for transporting their child to the buildings during this phase, um, since they may be starting a little bit earlier. In developing this plan, we've worked with our department subcommittee as well as consult with New Hampshire DOE and the Career Development Bureau, as well as other CTE centers across the state. And we'll continue to work closely with all stakeholders to ensure that a plan for CTE is safe and meets the needs of all our staff and students. Thank you.
Marsha Bagley, our Special Education Director, is gonna talk about special education under the hybrid model.
Good morning, uh, good evening, sorry, not morning. So in special education, our goal is to continue to provide students with FATE, uh, which is a free, appropriate public education. Uh, students will be expected to participate in the model the family chooses, and the model will, uh, mirror the students' grade levels. Uh, students who are participating in our intensive needs programs, the Brentwood Academy, project achievement grades K through eight, and signs of learning, will be offered consistent two full days a week of in-person instruction and three days of remote. The, uh, the reason for that is the need for social distancing. Uh, but we also understand that these students are our students who need the most hands-on instruction and services. So that's the reason that we've proposed the two full days. Students in our Nashua Early Education Program, which is our preschool, uh, programs, will be offered a combination of in-class and remote instruction and services. And I'll speak about preschool, I think, in the next slide. Um, as always, communication documentation on all parties is extremely important during these times. And we want to continue to support our students and staff's social, emotional well-being. You go to the next one. Thank you. Uh, so our students in our Nashua Early Education Program will be receiving services two days a week, the three-year-olds, uh, for two days, and the four-year-olds for two days. Unfortunately, we are going to have to suspend our, our PlayPal program, which is our students who, um, pay a tuition to attend the program due to the needs for social distancing within those classrooms. Title one preschools will have a combination of in-class and remote instruction as well as our Purple Panther preschools, which will also offer a combination of in-class and remote.
The ELL program will be following the same, uh, schedule as all, uh, native English-speaking students. Um, the focus, we have two primary focuses for the ELL program going into remote instruction. It's gonna be digital literacy for ELL students and their parents. Uh, we found that a lot of the students had a hard time, uh, being able to meaningfully, uh, participate in instruction because of their lack of technological skills. So we're gonna attack this by, uh, providing tutorials for both the students and the parent, the parents of the non-English-speaking students through, um, uh, YouTube videos, one-on-one tutorials, translated screenshots, and small group tutorials. We're gonna make heavy use of our, uh, communication is the other area that is gonna be really important for the ELL program. Uh, just keeping parents informed and gaining feedback from that population that's, at some, that sometimes does not hurt. And also, uh, I, there will be more digital platforms for ELL students to participate in. This will more activity through technology and also provide them with more practice using technology to become more competent in the future. And I think, and, okay, thank you.
Mr. Donovan, you're up.
I'm up. Transportation. Um, the plan at this point will be to have, uh, one student per bench on each bus. Though if you're siblings, you can certainly sit together. Um, that would give us about twenty-four students per bus. Um, drivers will wear masks while onboarding and offboarding. Um, it may be an issue while they're driving. Think about it, they're gonna look straight ahead, if, don't want anything fogging up glasses, et cetera. So that will be up to the driver while they're driving. Um, we will, we will suggest strongly that all students should wear cloth, cloth, uh, masks or masks of some sort, um, as soon as they get on the bus until they get off the bus. We may assign seats if there is that need on certain routes. We'll have to wait and see until we get all the data, until we assign those routes. At this point, the plan is to sanitize the bus. First, students will be responsible for that. They will sanitize it once a day, uh, though the areas like the rails where students grab, go up and, up and down, those will be sanitized, um, in between the tiers. And we will try to keep open the windows most every day. Rain may prevent that, but other than that, whether it be a bit cold or warm, we plan on keeping the windows. we plan on keeping the windows open for the flow of fresh air. Budget information, our school district operating budget is a hundred and fifty-six million this year, which was a two and point two-five percent increase. That all happened prior to the COVID nineteen in March. Since then, we also have received two-point-two million of one-time funds from the state. We will be using those funds. We have specific items listed in our budget for what those amounts will be. The original amount was two-point-nine million, but it was reduced by the Alderman to two-point-two million. And the news that we received recently, the CARES Act, we have received, it's a total of about three-point-three million for the city of Nashua schools. We need to share that with some of the non-public schools. So we will receive, Nashua School District will receive about two-point-nine million. That is the money we'll be using to purchase technology and PPE and things like that. So we'll be working on that budget. We've made some orders towards that. It's, it's a grant. It will be treated like a grant. And that's it for budget at this point.
So the Technology Department, we're going to be through, they're going to be distributing Chromebooks through the principals and the building staffs at the students' homeschool. This is a little bit different than how we did it in March, where we had, where it was lunch distribution. So just to make it easier, we're making, we're having Chromebooks in the homeschools. We're going to have the, we're going to provide families with resources. And it's going to be under the COVID nineteen tab, under the webpage on how to, if you do have issues, how to, you know, get those resolved by our tech department and through the building staff. We're also going to be providing some documentation on the website and along with the tech equipment. So we really want to make it like a one-stop shop for families, for resources on how to deal with technology and learn technology during the time. We also want to maintain the, the infrastructure for technology. So when we do come back and as we do add more Chromebooks and, and and students come back in the buildings, we want to make sure that our, our facilities can handle all that technology that's going back for connections and speeds and connected. So that does it.
Hi, this is Dana Garrett. I'm the Director of Human Resources. During this hybrid case, the office, Central Office will be open by appointment only. We will, of course, be badging and fingerprinting everybody in person. Our onboarding and our separations are going to be implemented mainly remotely as much as we can. We have a very small HR office and we want everybody to be safe. The HR department is also handling those staff who have a pre-existing medical condition that would put them at risk if they caught COVID nineteen. So if you do have a condition that poses a risk, we are going by the CDC list of conditions and we'll give you a medical inquiry for you to complete with your, your doctor to complete and sign and return it to us so that we can talk about accommodations for you. Of course, your medical information is confidential. We will be letting the principals know, however, what your accommodations are, not your medical condition. FMA is also available if you are sick or someone in your family is sick and the provisions of the EESL is still enforced. If your healthcare provider has told you to quarantine or you has told, you're waiting for a diagnosis, sorry, diagnosis and you have symptoms, or if you are taking care of someone. Unfortunately, the ADA does not cover family members who have pre-existing medical condition. And thank you.
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. What we did is that we provided some, within our reopening plan, some general feedback and some commentary on roles and expectation. These are general, they're, they're, they're used as a guide in an event that we call it like a quick look-up. And we provided that for administrators, teachers and parents and students as well. So that's, in, in the event, if you just wanted some general ideas on how to engage in the hybrid learning, these are some points to consider for our principals. Definitely serve as the point person, please. I know that it, it sometimes feels like going right to the board, you get immediate reaction, but the people that really know how the, how the, as you heard tonight, how the schedules are going to work and how they're going to feel and resources, and also making that change. It's important that you contact your building principal, staff, parents, because they are the ones that can give you the immediately quick and, and, and fast answers you need and accurate answers you need for any of the challenges you are, experience. They're also the ones who are going to be providing the schedules as well within each of the building. I just want to say thank you to our principals who just presented and the collaboration they all had amongst each other. But I also want to say one word, epidemiology. Epidemiology and epidemiology. All of this is fluid, it could change. Like I, when I started and I said it at the task force, we want to be able to, we're not a small district, we're not, you know, mom and pop. We have eleven thousand students in our district. We have about three thousand employees that are connected to our district. And so we have to be, we have to start thinking about building an infrastructure within our schools in the event that there's a rise in COVID nineteen cases, that we can close this down and go remote seamlessly to continue our kids' engagement and our, and their education. Conversely, if the numbers continue to go down and they go down and, and things are looking really well, we still want to make sure that we can move to move from, in some cases, our twenty-five percent capacity to maybe fifty percent capacity. All of this is contingent on epidemiology. And the point of this slide is that the principals are going to be the point person within their schools to communicate, communicate this to you. Go ahead. Professional development. I know that, Dr. McKinney talked about this earlier. One of the things we found out in our survey is that the teachers and staff said more professional development. That's what we want. So that's why we proposed in our, in our, in our calendar, some time for our teachers to engage in some professional development. Many of the things we're already doing already, just a enhancement of that understanding, whether it's our Amplify Science, Mystery Science, Company C-Based Grading, Lucy Cockens, Trauma Responsive Classrooms. Choose Love is our social emotional program that we're using, online learning, anything that has to do to improve our, 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 our faculties and staff comprehension of curriculum and implementation and assessment of instruction as well. One of the things when I met with the union and I want to thank, forgive me, either it was Deb or Patty, but they said, they said to me, they said, we said, professional development. And they were like, well, what are the days? Is it hybrid or is it for remote? I said, just professional development. But one of the things, they said, you have to be specific about that. You got to say remote or hybrid. So if you've seen the calendar for members, that, that was a suggestion from the, from the union that I thought, thought was very, very helpful. And we were very specific in making sure that those days were devoted to remote and, and the other days were devoted to hybrid. Now, if you finish one before the other, it's fine, but we just wanted to say that we heard you and thank you for that feedback as well. Family, we, we call this family orientation. We recognize in our first iteration of our remote learning that there were different levels of preparedness and readiness for amongst our parents and our community members. So one of the things we wanted to do is take a step back and really provide some opportunities to engage our parents and give them some background knowledge on, on computers, safety, just some basic things. Like, for instance, every night, make sure the computer is charged up. Many of our, our, our parents are not computer literate. And so we wanted to provide some opportunities to enhance their understanding of computer, particularly around Google Classroom, care for computers, maintenance of computers, anything that they would want, just to make it an easier, seamless transition. Again, under the umbrella of making sure that we can move and escalate between different models, whether it's remote or increasing our capacity of attendance within our school. Ms. Vingris?
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. As many of you know, we have been conducting summer workouts informally as well as voluntarily for our stu-, some of our student athletes. Things have been going very well this summer as we have started to reopen our campuses and our, our district a little bit. One of the things that we all know is that athletics elicits some sort of emotion within people, whether it be our students, their parents, or the community at large in one way or another. So Dr. Mosley's been very consistent since we started the reopening plan that we will have fall sports in Nashua. Exactly what that looks like, still yet to be seen. This information here is different than you will find in the reopening plan because that was being finalized on Thursday evening and the NHIAA just voted on Thursday to delay the start of fall sports. So we've tried to get the word out to our high school students, but we will not start football on August fourteenth. We will not start all of our other fall sports on August seventeenth. That has been delayed until September eighth. I've been working very, very hard all summer and spring with my, my AD colleagues throughout the state and we all agree with this decision. We feel that it's necessary for, for athletics to kind of step aside for a little bit so that we can help with the reopening plans and getting our students back to school. So we're, we're planning for all of our regular fall sports that we offer in middle and high school. Schedules will obviously be altered in some way. Transportation's going to be an issue. Today, we met as a high school Division One community and we've decided that we're going to relook at our schedules and regionalize. So we may not be traveling to the seacoast and to Concord and to Pinkerton and Salem. We may play only north, south, BG, Alveron, Merrimack, and then Keene because honestly, we're the closest to them. So we're really going to try to regionalize and, and keep our, our circle pretty tight. So again, high school fall sports has been delayed. We don't know when the first date to compete is yet. The NHIAA Council tabled that at their meeting last week and they are meeting again at the end of this week to make those decisions. We are anticipating that middle schools will follow suit with their high school counterparts. Right now, middle school sports are scheduled to start on August thirty-first, but we're anticipating they will also delay. So that hasn't been decided yet. I've been in conversation with our Director of Transportation, Mr. Rossio, about, especially the month of September, all of our middle and high school students are going to be learning remotely. None of them are going to be in school. What do we do to get them back to school for practices? So he said during the remote situation, it won't be a problem. He'll be able to run our middle school and high school routes to pick up our student athletes and bring them back to school campus for practices. Parents will have to provide their own transportation at the end of practices, but he can at least get them to school. He also said that during the hybrid first two phases, while all of the schools, elementary, middle and high school are on an early release schedule, he is confident that after he brings all the elementary students home, he will be able to run those middle school and high school routes to bring students back to school as well. Again, all that, all of this is dependent on the numbers going in a positive direction. And then transportation to away contests, this is obviously going to be, be an issue for us because of what Mr. Donovan just talked about. We're putting about twenty-four kids on a bus. Our football teams usually travel with anywhere from seventy to eighty students and staff. So we are going to need more buses. We may have to limit the number of students who can travel, but we are going to open it up, something we do not normally allow. We are going to allow parents to transport their own child. They can't take a carpool, car full of students, but they can transport their own child if they are able to in a way of that. That would then open up seats on the buses for students who don't have that ability. So hopefully, everybody agrees that athletics is, is one way to teach the unwritten social emotional learning and affect the whole child. So that's it for athletics. I think I also have co-curriculars. This was part of my subgroup from the task force. Co-curriculars, I met with band, chorus, music individuals, as well as student government advisors and the student activity coordinators from the high school. During remote learning, they feel that in terms of clubs and activities and student elections, they can do all of that remotely. The biggest thing is going to be our, our band, chorus and drama clubs. In order to do those things remotely and virtually, they would need additional technology and additional people to help them with that in order to be able to facilitate performances. And then if we were in the hybrid model, a lot of the activities, rather than just having one meeting a week, they might have three or four meetings a week to hit all of the students that are involved in that activity. But they would continue to run as many of these things as remotely as possible. In talking about the transportation piece, if band or chorus needs to have a full rehearsal, obviously, social distance, big field, things like that, then the transportation piece, when they're doing routes to get our athletes back to the school, they could also get the band and chorus students back to school as well.
We're deliberate in the reopening and the rationale as we, as I shared earlier. We want to make sure that we have enough time to secure our proper equipment, PPE equipment for our faculty and for our staff. We want to make sure that when we're looking at reopening our schools, that they're designed in a way that's going to keep our staff and our students safe. It's not going to be traditional classroom as we remember them. They're going to be looking and feeling very differently and we need to prepare and make sure that we do this prudently and timely. We also, what we learned, lessons learned from our first iteration of remote learning, I think we planned two days to distribute computers. Well, I think it took two and a half weeks to do that. And so now in our schedule, we also have allowed that amount of time to get the computers to, to our, to our most needed students. Lessons learned too is that our, our families, some of our families needed some professional development, some help around technology, preparedness, and that's why we're offering supports and P, professional development on, on Google Classroom and some of, and maintenance and care for, for computers. We also heard from our staff that they were looking for some professional development on some software that we're using in this district. That includes Google Classroom, CSO and other online platforms that we're using. And more importantly, you know, this takes time and establishing a hybrid model with three different levels, with so many different needs, with our ELL students, with our special education students. But I'll even go one step further. Also, we're coordinating services for our students who are out of district placement as well. We're also coordinating services, as Mike McQuillan shared earlier, around our CTE programs. And we have two CTE programs that we're running. And so we're also coordinating our, our hybrid schedule and remote learning schedule also with our other sending districts in the vicinity. Wow. So just a couple of things, again, be flexible. Nothing is setting so, set in stone, excuse me. It's about epidemiology, epidemiology. We also have to keep in mind that in fact, when families are affected by the virus, it's not just one person, but it can be an entire family. We're also looking to get our parents' selection forms. And basically, what we really want to know from our parents is, do you want to send your child remote? Or do you want to send your child in the hybrid? And we can start building our schedule on that. And then finally, I thought this was a great thing. Go ahead, Tara. We, if, if you've ever had instructions to, on a lawnmower or, or any type of appliance, there's always a quick start to it. And so we just created a quick start page for parents just so that if you didn't, an hour and fifteen, an hour and, well, no, it's hour and fifteen minutes. That wasn't too bad. You don't have an hour and fifteen minutes, you just want to get to the, the meat of the, the, the presentation. We created a quick start section for our parents. Go ahead, Tara. And one for staff. Just dates, things to think, dates, what's going to happen? Just a quick summary for both our parents and staff to reference in the event that they didn't watch this hour and fifteen minutes, but it's just over. but it's just over communicating, getting the information out. And that's what, 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 what we created. So, there it is, a quick start guide. And Dave Rossio came up with the idea, our bus transportation. So, I want to give a, a shout out to Dave for these two slides. Okay, we spoke, we've talked a lot. I want to, again, I can't thank the administrators, Tara, Gabby, Stacy, all the people working behind the scenes to make this happen, directors. It's just been amazing, Sharon Gelio, principals, you know, CTE, I just, it's been a correct, um, special ed. It's just been a great experience. We all came together on this. So, with that said, I can turn it over to the Board President and we can entertain questions or however you'd like to proceed.
Thank you so much, Dr. Mosley and every single person who just spoke. I appreciate, both as a parent and as a board member, the amount of time and effort that you've put into explaining this. I do have one request before we move to board comments. And that is, Dr. Mosley, could you speak a little bit about the survey that is, you've planned to send out, I think, between, for parents to respond between tomorrow and the eleventh? And what it is that you're, you know, what the purpose of the survey is? What you're looking for from parents? Thanks.
The survey, I, I would say that there were a group of people, including myself, that worked on the survey. But I also want to say that really, the, I, I, I would say that I will defer to Masha Bagley and Masha can, because she was the one that was really wordsmithing the, the survey and really did a nice job making it as clean as possible, but also getting the different feedback. So, Masha, would you mind just briefly answering that? And thank you for the question.
Excuse me. So, the, the survey is just a, it should take less than five minutes for parents to complete for each student in their household. And it asks parents to answer a series of questions, including the student's name, if they will, if they have access to transportation, I'm sorry, if they will be using the school buses, if they require Chromebook, if they have an IEP, 504, ELL services. And then it asks them to choose the option for the, either remote or hybrid. And it also includes that parents are choosing to unenroll their child from the school district and they have to contact the neighborhood school that the student is in.
Thank you. So, when a parent is evaluating their choice between remote or hybrid, you're talking about continuing with remote as the district switches to hybrid? Or will they start having a different schedule right from day one?
The, the remote schedule, so the remote is until, for everyone, until October fifth, I believe, is when elementary will be transitioning to the hybrid. So, the remote schedule would be established prior to the hybrid. Am I answering that question correctly?
I think so, because I, when I read the reopening plan and in the, in the slides just now, there was like a sample of what an elementary schedule would look like, for example, and a, you know, a middle school and a high school schedule. Would a parent who wants their children to stay remote because they're not prepared to send them back yet, would they expect that their child continues to follow that schedule that starts, for example, at nine o'clock for, for, you know, block one and then et cetera, et cetera? Or would it be different?
They would continue following the remote, remote learning schedule.
Okay. All right, great, thank you. And then the other question regarding that is, if a parent chooses hybrid today or tomorrow when they get the survey, but in the end of September, they're like, oof, no, I'm not ready. I want to switch to remote. Is that possible? Or vice versa? Perhaps they start remote and then a few weeks into hybrid, their student really wants to be in the school. Can they switch? Or is it one choice for the trimester or however long?
We talked about that at length because we understand that it's a, it's a big decision for families to make. And we determined that the, the decision would be binding through January. That's because of the need for the reduced number of students in the classrooms. And it would be very difficult for schools to plan for students who were not in the classroom to come back into the classroom, throwing off the class sizes.
And I would just add that this is all contingent upon how many teach. We also surveyed some of the teach. We also have to recognize that this is contingent upon staff as well. So, we have to make sure, or we're hoping that there's a balance, but there, if there's a disproportionate amount of faculty that can only do, because of health reason, the remote learning, that we can't offer the hybrid. So, it's all, it's all contingent upon our, our staff availability as well.
So, are you polling staff at the same time that you're polling the parents?
As Dana said earlier, there are staff who have reached out to us and said they cannot, you can't poll people's health records and health situations. So, that's, so we have had some faculty reach out and said, I have a pre, like I have a pre-existing conditions. I have a, a, I don't know, a family member that lives with me and this is why. So, we're doing that through our HR to get that information. Through legal, legal advisors, I, I can't see Dana, but legal advisors to, to do it in this approach rather than just a, a survey.
So, it's not, oh, I'm sorry, Dana, go ahead.
Sorry. So, we're reaching out to employees with pre-existing conditions. Please let us know so that we can see, you know, identify your condition, make sure it's on the list from the CDC and get you an accommodation. The families, you know, there's FMLA. If someone is sick in their family, they can use FMLA. But we have a lot of teachers who do have family members that, that do have pre-existing conditions, but there, there's no legal accommodation for your family member. It's for you.
All right. So, the parents can make a choice, but, but staff are expected to participate in whatever the plan is unless they have a medical exemption.
Yeah, and there's some, I mean, I, I'll just add like, you know, in the ideal situation, there may be staff that just want to do exclusively remote and they have, they're perfectly fine. And that's what the hybrid model is built on for that level of flexibility. Maybe they're divide up, I'm just making, as Nate and Keith and the principals mentioned, that we may have to divide up the faculty in a way where some of them prefer to teach remote and some of them prefer to teach hybrid. And they'll divide up the students. You take the hybrid students, I'll take the remote students. So, there's some opportunity for that. You know, we, we've also, I shared this with the union too and with the reopening task force. We have teachers that, that want to go back. I mean, they want to go back. They want to see the kids. We want, they, they want to see, they want to engage our preschool kids. They want to get a sense of structure before the remote. And we've told them, no, we can't do that until we get all of the proper P, PPE equipment together, but we also come up with this plan as well. So, it's always a balance between teachers that want to go back and teachers that do not want to go back, but there's also some teachers who are very scared as well. So, we're always trying to find that balance.
Thank you. And so, just to remind everybody that the reopening plan, the actual plan with the executive summary is on our website under the reopening task force. Is the PowerPoint on the website right now as well? Or would that be up sometime this week?
It's up.
It's up, okay. So, if you missed any of the PowerPoint, please go on the website so that you can get it or print it if you're tactile like me. Okay, so, I, what I'd like to do this evening is have questions from board members. We tend to be a talkative bunch. And so, I thought we would do board members tonight and then public comments on Wednesday and then take a vote. Probably on the calendar and then also the reopening plan separately, I think, but we can talk about that as we get closer. I cannot see everybody. There's still like twenty-five people on here. So, if you could continue to use the chat to let me know. So, I have to start. Both of our student board members have indicated that they have questions. So, I'd like to start with Mr. Norris and then Mr. Gao. And then I will go to board members.
Thank you. So, I, I, obviously, this is very thorough and I clearly showed a lot of work into it. I know the task force was meeting a lot. But that said, I do have a few concerns. So, obviously, I, some are about whether the curriculum or everything or the job requirement for teachers. But I think my, the most important concern right now is what happens if somebody gets sick? Because I know I've read through the plan a couple of times and I really saw no protocol for if a student gets sick. Is that going to be the whole, his whole class, his or her whole class passed to quarantine for two weeks? Because I know it kind of reminds me of the MLB. They just decided to go for it. And then when people started getting sick, all, all heck broke loose and nobody really knew what to do. So, I think we definitely need to have a set in stone plan to figure out what happens. Because someone will inevitably get COVID-19 while they're in school. And I don't know if we have a plan already put in place or we need to develop one, but just a thought. Thank you.
I'll defer to Ms. Bagley to respond to that and also Gina as well.
Sure. I think right now, we're just trying to concentrate on the opening of school. There is a lot of details put in place. We're working with Dr. Chen, the epidemiologist, and the New Hampshire Board of School of Nursing is working on details when that happens. I think what happens, what's going to happen is each individual person and the individual cases, we will have to address. It's going to be on an individual basis and there will be a plan intact. But I think tonight, we're just going to go over the basics, you know, for the calendar.
Okay. Mr. Norris, did you have another question or was that your main?
I'm good for now.
Mr. Gao?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to start off saying like, thank you, everyone. I was reading the, the, the plan yesterday night and it's evident that everyone has put a lot of work and a lot of care, thought into this. So, everyone who contributed, definitely, thank you so much. Actually, I had the same point as Steven. I'm pretty concerned about the contract tracing piece. Given like the asymptomatic nature, right, of this virus, we really, I, 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 I feel that we can't wait for the first day of school to, to develop a plan case by case for any student who may contract the virus. Because simply, if someone does contract the virus, the rest of the people that they've contacted are at risk for the virus as well. So, so I think if we maybe just even set some guidelines that have flexibility incorporated within, as, as, as long as we have some, even if there's broad or general guidelines, I think it's really important to have an idea at least of what the procedure is to go through that process. So, that was just one thing. Another thing was like the, the class time. Given the schedule in phase one, I believe it'll be like twenty-five percent of the students, at twenty-five percent of the students in school at a time. This means that, for example, if I choose a hybrid model, I'll be in school on one day and then I'll also be with my teachers on the full remote day. And, and this compared with what we do normally or even what we did last spring is actually significantly reduced in terms of our, our, our contact time with the teachers. And just that, that, that piece kind of concerns me. Is it possible we can live stream the classes maybe? Or, or something like that, just to, to increase that, that level of, I guess, connectedness, I suppose? Like if we have this consistent relation teach, with, with teachers and students, I think that, that would really enhance the learning experience. So, those are my two questions. First one on, on contact tracing, is it okay if we at least put in some sort of general guidelines saying, okay, we would at least go to the, the head nurse first, then they would immediately analyze the situation within, in twenty-four hours with, before the next day opens? And those people that that person with the virus was exposed to, we can figure out a plan before then? If, so, so the first question was, can, can we put together some general like guidelines? And the second one was, is there a way we can live stream classes and somehow increase the consistency between the, between teachers and students? Thank you.
I think that we can certainly put in some protocols in the event. Sure. I, I mean, I think these are great suggestions. I think that we are, where, and we can definitely put in some recommendations and some supports in the event that we sus, we suspect that. I think it works on two folds, Josh. I think it's around the parents too. Because if we really don't want parents sending their, their child to school if they suspect they're sick. We're also sensitive to, to, to the point in, just recently, if you watch the CDC guidelines, that in addition to COVID-19, we're also heading into flu season as well, and allergy season. And it's always hard to distinguish between the, those types of symptoms compared to COVID-19. We want to, I think they're great suggestions. I think we can certainly do that. Our focus was around just the, what the reopening feels like, schedule-wise, expectations for parents and teachers and administrators and staff. But certainly, though, the points you bring up are certainly something we're going to expand. What we were trying not to do is to make this feel like war and peace. But at the same time, yeah, I mean, I think it's some, some good, good suggestions. Anything else, Gina or Bobby, that we could talk about this? Or I saw Dana had some, had some responses too. So, I, I'll open the floor.
Is it okay if I speak? Okay. So, talking with Attorney Bennett about all the staff concerns and everything, he said that first of all, any student or staff who does have COVID-19 can't come to the school. That's it, right? There's no choice. They can't come into the school. And we, as a district, we are going to have to have some guidelines and board policies around this so everybody knows what to do. But if some, if somebody is displaying symptoms, we can send them home. If it's a staff or student, we can do that. We don't necessarily have to. We have to go by the CDC guidelines for symptoms, but we can send them home. We send them home. I know it's a staff person, we're going to have to pay them, but we're trying to keep everybody safe. And Steve has strongly recommended that we have a policy so that everybody knows what we're doing in that case for staff and students. So, those will probably be our next steps.
Thank you, Ms. O'Gara. And I'm sure Ms. Bishop and Mr. Parker can work with Ms. Lopez and Mr., and Attorney Bennett to put that on the next policy agenda so that we have a policy that the board can look at before school starts. Not to put things on your plate, Jen, but that would be great. Okay. Let's see. Mr. Gao, did you have a second question that we missed?
Yes. The second question was just on whether we could like live stream the classes or whether there's any other way besides the office hours that we could remain the consistent connectedness between the teachers and students.
I can answer this. So, we, that would be a challenge that we would face since our, our internet pipe for our schools is around two gigabytes or gigabits. We wouldn't be able to do it from the, from the actual class and everybody doing it at the same time if there was a staggered way of doing that. We probably could handle a little bit, but we still have to keep district operations up. So, our internet does run our phones. It does run our, our servers and all that other stuff. So, we would have to take a, a look and possibly increasing our bandwidth to be able to handle the load of streaming. Another thing that's a challenge is cameras. We don't have enough cameras for the district to do that either. Everybody has the same idea right now of having, wanting to stream their classes and, and using Zoom. So, there is a shortage of cameras right now, along with everything else that's technology-related for classrooms.
Mr. Rodriguez, when you talk about the idea of potentially expanding bandwidth at the school, for those of us who are not technical, does that involve simply like purchasing more bandwidth from like a supplier? Like at my house, we have Comcast. Or would we also need physical infrastructure to support that?
At the schools, we, I don't think, if we're, if we're remote to begin with, we don't need the infrastructure just yet. The, we, the infrastructure we would need would be monthly when we come back. But at the, for, we do have Comcast as our internet provider. So, we would have to purchase an additional line to support the internet at a much bigger pipe, as we could say, as you would say, than we do right now. So, that would be two separate pipes because the way our E-rate process works, and I know I'm getting into weeds with details, we would need to, to do two separate internet pipes, one to handle one thing and one to handle another.
Okay. That sounds interesting and something that the board can talk to Mr. Donovan about in finance, about whether that's even- Um, about whether that's even a possibility.
Also, we are also talking with our, our E-rate consultant um on how to do that. So that is a conversation that we have been having for the past week or two, so um, this is, this isn't a new thing that's coming up.
Thank you. Dr. Mosley?
Yeah, I just wanna add about the live streaming. Some of our kids have like no recording. Um, no recording of videos, like they don't want to be recorded or show up in videos, so we also have to consider that as well. Um, and that's a sense of privacy, so I just wanted us to be aware of that.
Good. Thank you, Dr. Mosley. I think that's an important point. Mr. Gao?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Mosley, for adding that. And I just had one quick question for uh Mr. Rodriguez. I was wondering in terms of the cameras like that you mentioned and the additional cost that we need to incur, is there any way we could just use like Chromebook cameras or like webcams, just like we're using right now for Zoom?
It's possible. Not everybody has a laptop, though. Uh, but there are a lot of Chromebooks. You saw the um, consider microphones cuz if, if the farther you go away from a, a laptop, uh, if a teacher is instructing on a whiteboard or um on a document camera, whatever, there is a, a distancing that they, we have to be aware of when um, uh, when they're holding class, so eh, there would be um some ways around it, but it would be, i- i- there, there are challenges presented, so I, I don't wanna paint a rosy picture on, on how, how teachers and uh teach because I've never been a classroom teacher, but I can imagine that there would be challenges. Uh, because the Chromebooks aren't, you know, they're not the highest um technology. You don't have the strongest microphones. They don't have a lot of pickup, so we could get a, it could get a little fuzzy if that's the case, and there isn't a, a laptop for every teacher in the district.
Okay, thank you so, so much.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Gao, and thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Um, I have um Ms. Johnson asked to ask some questions.
Thank you very much. I think I have a lot of questions here, but first of all, um first one, I think is to Bobby Bagley. When you said that we went from eight percent to twelve percent of cases, that's based on how many people?
Is Bobby Bagley still with us?
I don't think so.
Okay, maybe someone can get that answer for me cuz um I've had a call her and I think my opinion that um one of the corporation councils that hasn't called me back on health issues with the COVID-19 and masks, so um, yeah, I think that's a very important piece. Um, how many cases, numbers of people, because you're gonna have twelve percent of ten people, you know, on cases, so I just wanna make sure that's clear on that. Um, also I've, I've got some other concerns here that
Ms. Johnson, the answer to that question might be on um the public, the National Public Health's website. They do have a dashboard with all of their data.
Okay, um, I know my days have been very filled. I'm trying to get back into life again um what it was before four months ago. Um, also, I think this is to Mr. Donovan. Um, and I guess to Mr. Rodriguez, the Chromebooks, we'll start with the Chromebooks. We have five hundred of them that were destroyed. Eighteen, I guess, beyond recognition. Um, I've, we all saw the contract and I asked for a copy of the signature page because I wanted to see how the parents or body is assigning these contracts. Because I guess now, and I really fought hard on this, that we, the taxpayers, even through risk management, shouldn't have to pay for these Chromebooks. We've already paid for them once. And then one of my board members says, what are you gonna do? Get the um Chromebook police? No. But we all have to understand, and I guess part of my concern is that if these were destroyed, then I guess they weren't in class and who was following and monitoring this? And we all should be concerned if we're going into remote learning now. Because the job, in four months, we went from full school to remote learning. And these students have to have this education. We're paying for it one way or the other, whether it's through the federal government in the grant money or through the taxpayers. So I wanna know about what's gonna happen with these Chromebooks. I wanna see the um signature page on how this signing for this. And I guess no one's being held accountable for the last batch that was busted up. And I'm not happy about that because there's a lot of issues here, like I said. Is it because kids weren't learning? How did they not, nobody knew about this? So we've gotta make sure that this doesn't happen again. That's number one. Number two, my other concern is that, and I went through the teacher's contract. And we have a teacher's contract and I've got tons of papers all over the place here. We have a teacher's contract that very clearly spells out um time in the classroom, how many hours they're working a day. And so I'd like to know, and I think we as a board need to sit and take a look at this contract because I think that we're all going to be in violation of the teacher's contract. They're supposed to be in the classroom one hundred and eighty days when I'm in the classroom. If um school's supposed to be six and three-quarter hours a day, we're remoting now. Um, if they're supposed to be in a classroom, we're in hybrid mode. So I think we need some clarification on that um because we're not doing anything which the contract spells out, and that would be basically for the nurses, anybody that we have contracts for. Um, so I'd like some information on that. Um, let's see, what else did I pull up here? Um, let's see.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Were you um intending to ask a question about the um Chromebook agreements? I know last time we talked about Chromebooks, you had asked if um there was going to be a new form for the um fall. Has that, is that something that's happening or no?
I don't know. Is that happening, Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Donovan? A new form?
And what, what term, what do you mean by new form?
Well, I wanna make, I'm sorry.
Yeah, new agreement.
Was the previous one not comprehensive enough?
Well, I can, if I can find it amongst all my papers, gonna do so much research here. Where was it? I got everything, but where was that signature page that talked about who's held responsible if these Chromebooks come back damaged and they're not usable? Who signed for it? We said that discipline of, of kids in school, but we're not in school, so there's no discipline.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify. So there was, it wasn't five hundred uh damage. So at, at the time of the last uh meeting that I, that I presented on, it was five hundred that were um, that were still outstanding. Uh, that number uh is, you know, dwindling by the day as people do return the Chromebooks um daily. So um, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but that number is smaller than five hundred right now.
Okay, I wanna know the number of how many Chromebooks are damaged. We know that there was eighteen that was beyond recognition. But again, the question becomes, who is responsible when these Chromebooks come back damaged? And when that, if they're damaged, that means they're not on school doing remote work. And I'd like to know, can somebody please give me a figure how many students never even went on remote learning? I mean, that's important. We're talking about remote learning in hybrid, and if they're not gonna be in school and they're gonna be remoting, who's watching them if these are going to be the same students that failed the first time around to be on remote learning? And one thing, I guess, um I mean, I could send out every one of my questions cuz I went through page by page by page here. And I wanna hold everybody here tonight, but I'm really concerned about this. Um with the remote learning. I'm concerned even with the hybrid, two days in, two days out, clean on Friday. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me, a lot of this. And also, I'm concerned with the fact that reading emails and hearing parents stopping me, um, people recognize me, I guess, wherever I go. Um, there was only two scenarios, not three, and people really wanted that choice of three scenarios. They wanted to give their opinion and they felt that they were slated. So if the board doesn't mind, I don't wanna take up a lot of the time here with all my questions. I can just send them all to Dr. Mosley and I can email it to the whole board since I'm talking about this is public information right now. Because I don't want any board member to say I'm violating the rights of the law this time with the information. Do have a lot of questions, a lot of questions with the buses, questions with the contract, they give those teachers contracts, the paralegal contracts. Um, I think there's, there's questions on how we're gonna deal with contractual issues at this point in time where we're not going back into school. School is a hundred and eighty days a year, and if we drop them down to a hundred and seventy-seven, that's now another issue in a contract. So I think we as a board are gonna have to talk about this and deal with this. Thank you.
So perhaps that um is an answer that Dr. Mosley and Ms. O'Gara could provide for when we come back on Wednesday um about whether or not MOUs will be required. I imagine that uh Dr. Mosley and Ms. O'Gara have discussed this with uh Mr. Marku and the heads of the other unions as part of the task force. Yes?
There's been some discussion on all that. Have we sat down and had formal interactions in terms of like negotiating that? No. Um, I also, I'm just curious. I don't know where those questions were coming from, so maybe it would be helpful if Ms. Johnson could just write down those questions, be uh, and then send it to us and then we can work on them um the best we can. I, 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 there, there was a lot that was said that I wasn't quite sure where this is all, where this is coming from. Um, I, I don't know anything about a hundred and seventy-seven days. Um, you know, our teachers worked very, very hard uh dur- during this time, um, whether, and, and that was preparing and facilitating remote learning. Um, so there was no days that were, that were eliminated as well. Because what we're proposing and what, what, what we talked about today, it certainly does change the, the calendar for, from a traditional school year that these contracts are built on to a um, a, a calendar that is suited for pandemic. And so um, there is gonna be further discussions with the union um and uh, with, with our union, excuse me, a- as to what that feels like in this new environment. It's not gonna be done over, it's not gonna be done over two or three days. It's gonna take some time. Uh, so I, I think this is an opportunity to engage in those MOUs um on both sides.
Well, I'd like to say that cuz the hundred and seventy-seven days, I'm seeing on the new calendar and that if, how many hours teachers are in the classroom and if they're not in the classroom for that many hours, then there's a difference in the contract. And I know people have been talking to me and asking the questions and I'm just bringing up what's been said to me from um taxpayers in the city. Um, because I know we're coming on a very difficult time in this city um and people are concerned with schools, not only with schools, with the city in general. So I'm bringing up what people say to me, that people are very concerned um, again, with special ed, how the needs are really gonna be met with OTPT and what's happened um with the severely disabled kids. And um, I didn't see anything in here. Maybe I missed it about how to dis replacements. Yeah, um, and I don't remember, um, Marsha, maybe I missed it in the midst of everything, but um, I guess that would be one of my big questions, what are we gonna be doing about that? Because I have an advocate who's been asking me questions. Oh, um, I can't answer something I really don't know, so I'll put that in my questions. Thank you very much.
I would recommend, go ahead, Tara.
Um, I see that Ms. uh, uh Bagley, Ms. Bobby Bagley uh came back, so I didn't know if maybe she could answer the question that um Ms. Johnson asked.
I would love it. Thank you.
So, um, Ms. Johnson, could you repeat your question for Ms. Bagley, please, about the twelve percent?
Sure. Twelve percent, you said that we went from eight percent in cases up to twelve percent of how many people?
In the cases?
Oh, yes, thank you. That's a, a good question. So what we've um been able to look at is the number of kids that we've tested um over the period of time and out of the hundred and twenty-nine that we've tested as of this week, we saw an increase of from eight percent in our positive um percentage up to twelve percent. But that's a result of the fact that we have more kids that are testing with their parents. And so we offer testing um every week to the community. And for the past few weeks, we've been getting up to about a hundred um to a hundred and fifty uh tests that we're doing per week and uh families have come in and when they come in, they bring their, their children as well. And so we've just seen an increase in the percentage of positives in kids under um the age of twenty. And so we look at that information and we, and, and I asked the staff, uh, our epidemiologist to look at that for me today because of, you know, and across the country, some others, school, uh, schools are starting to reopen. Um, and it was one particular school where they had their plan in place and it's really good that Nashville's plan is as thorough as it is. They followed their plan, but what they did um fine was that they did have a positive case of, of a kid in the school and they followed their plan and they took care of things really quickly because of the mitigation. So we looked at that number today because we know that when, you know, the kids are coming back together and even though we have the um, the lower number of kids that are gonna be in the school, we're still expecting that there's gonna be uh, you know, some positive cases that come in. But we also know that we have a nice plan that's in place um that will help us mitigate that pretty quickly. So we're just gonna keep watching the numbers because um, right now, kids are underrepresented in testing because the focus was always on the, the older people, seniors, health professionals, frontline uh workers, and so we're just starting to get more testing done in uh the population that includes kids. And so we're actually starting to see a little bit of an uptick in that percentage of positive. But that's also because of the activities that are going on over the summer. So kids are out, they're, you know, doing things with their neighbors, they're at parties, they're, you know, they're doing stuff, so they're out. Um, as things opened up, parents are exposed to COVID and so the parents might be taking COVID home to the kids. We're just, you know, seeing that, you know, kids are not exempt from getting this infection.
Well, um, I know that a lot of studies have shown that children do not get it. What is the average age of these um kids that are getting it?
So the ones that we've looked at so far, just from today, were on under twenty. So there is actually, and I will send out, um, I had the, the staff, you know, we've been looking at different things, some different studies have come out and there has been a couple that have just come out this past week that did show that the um infectiousness of COVID-19, they did see that it is higher in kids. So I will send that out to uh Tara, and she can send that out to everybody on the board. That study just came out.
The study just came out?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm nodding my head, yes.
Okay, and one last question. So when you're testing these people, are you doing contact tracing to see who they've been with?
Yes, on any positive cases that come back, there is contact um tracing that is done in that case, during that case investigation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Bagley. Um, I appreciate that information and then the note of that study. Um, I feel like the information
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the information keeps um evolving. As more time goes on, we get more information, people do more studies.
Um, yeah.
And so sometimes it, it goes contrary to the assumptions that we had before we had the information, so well, um, science is about trying and trying again.
Exactly. And the thing that, so that what we saw, the opportunity of kids getting infected was missed, right? But that's a good thing because at the peak of our um outbreak with COVID, remember the schools closed in March, right? We were just starting to spike, spike up with our um infections, but our kids were not in school. So that was, that was something that we missed, which was nice for us. Schools closed, kids weren't exposed to um, you know, the virus. And what we saw was, you know, in the settings where there were people gathered together, a long-term care settings and other places is where we saw the bump up in cases. So now that we have this opportunity for kids to come back together, we don't want to be remiss in thinking that they cannot get infected. But because Nashville has a good plan, we know that we'll be able to mitigate that very, very quick. And that's what's important. All the measures that are in that plan with the social distancing, the wearing of the face coverings, the smaller class sizes, the hybrid, all of those things are gonna help keep those numbers down for Nashville School District.
Right. Oh, I'm not on mute. Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Bagley. Um, and Dr. Mosley, I think you were about to say something when uh we realized that Ms. Bagley was back uh and I didn't wanna cut you off. No? Okay. Okay, um, so Ms. Johnson, if you could email your questions to Dr. Mosley and the board, I think that would be helpful so that um, he's able to answer them uh hopefully by um Wednesday. Um, um, Ms. Zim is raising her hand. Um, her chat isn't working, so we'll go to Ms. Zim next and then Ms. Brown and then Ms. Odin. Thank you, Mr. Gao, for letting me know.
And I wanted to go back to Mr. Gao's question. I think that Mrs. Bag-
And I wanted to go back to Mr. Gao's question. I think that Mrs. Bagley might have the answer. He asked what I thought was a very worthy question. And that was if we find a child in class who has COVID, then what is this process that you referred to but didn't elaborate on? Do you, do you know that answer or am I, do you need to get back to us?
I think if I could just add, like, again, safety is paramount. And that's why it's important to have this flexibility in remote. If that's the case, if that's like, uh, just a student gets covert, COVID, excuse me, COVID nineteen in one of our buildings, honestly, we shut that building down. Every single kid goes there, goes, goes remote. Bobby starts doing contact tracing. And if we find out that there's a connection in, 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 in another building, we shut that building down, you go remote. I mean, and that's the, the, the beauty of this, the, what the reality is and what we're proposing with this hybrid model. And what we've been talking about tonight is that let's say the worst case scenario is that there's, you know, there's a kid in the district we don't know and there, there, there's questions. We're proposing have, building an infrastructure. Fine. We'll shut the, we could actually switch to remote and go two weeks. Two weeks of, 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 of remote learning until we can, you can get a sense of, uh, um, containment and, and, and get some more information. So what we're building, you know, uh, because we're such a large district, we're building a large, um, that we're building the ability to be flexible and, and shift very, very quickly in the, in the case that there is a student or students that become, um, infected with the virus. So that's the, kind of the big picture of this, but certainly getting into the details on, on, on identification. And certainly how public health officials, but I think that we're proposing here tonight is to really have that flexibility and ability to shift in the event that, that we see numbers, not just like just in our schools, but also in our community as well.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. Ms. Zeeam, did you have any other questions right now?
Oh, that was, thank you very much. I, I'm always, I'm very impressed with, I think you did a great job. I think whole district just shows what a wonderful district we have and how many wonderful community members we have. I love you all, wherever you are out there.
Thank you, Ms. Zeeam. Okay, uh, next I have Ms. Brown and then Ms. Odin.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Um, so I have a, quite a list here of questions and comments. And I'm going to start first with, um, some emailed questions that I got based on the distribution of the full packet to, from the community. The first one was actually a question about, um, the Playpals curriculum. You mentioned that that's going to be, uh, eliminated temporarily. Is that temporarily? Is that until like January? Do we, is there a time when we intend to bring that program back safely?
Um, for the next school year, for the remainder of the school year, we will be suspending that.
Okay. All right. Um, my next question is about cleaning prot- protocols in appendants E, safety and protocol section. It was concerned about the above, it said in, highlighted, the above measures are dependent on the availability of supplies and materials. And the addition of twelve temporary custodians. The concern was that if there's some reason that, that those supplies are not available, does that mean that everything also shuts down? We moved to fully remote if we can't get enough. I guess UV lights, polycarbonate petitions, whatever those things are, there's a whole list of, um, protocol items. There a plan for that?
I, I would suggest we would be able to get most of the equipment. One of the items would, that, that has the longest lead time of the foggers that we're using to clean the classrooms. If we had to wait a week or two, let's say mid-October till we receive those, we would go to another. It would be much more labor intensive, but for short term, we could just wipe everything down and, and clean it in a different manner. So hopefully none of these items, if we were to open school September first, I think the answer would be different. But since children won't be in until, uh, October, I, we're hoping we should be able to have most of the items.
Excellent. I, I appreciate that. Um, and I was glad to see that in the presentation that you plan on doing a deep clean or a full clean, um, and disinfection of the schools every night. That was excellent to read. Um, Mr. Donovan, actually a follow-up to that specific thing. How are we, where are we on PPE for teachers, students, um, all that kind of thing? Are we far out of both A budget and B access to things? Um, I mean, if we proceed as scheduled or in, as this proposal presents, if we get on board to do stuff, um, and I'm guessing at least the special ed classrooms and CTE will be at least part-time in the classroom, um, after Labor Day, will we have PPE for people?
Yes, we should have, uh, face guards, we should have masks, we should have partitions. Most of the items that, uh, I believe we, we will have. Um, as far as money, it depends on how, how long this continues. But we'll certainly have enough to get the, the first half of the school year using the grant funds.
Excellent. Good to hear. So, okay, so this next question is actually, um, someone in the community reached out to me. They are a, um, alumni of the CTE program and also another student who's currently in this CTE program. Asking about the hands-on nature that Mr. McQuillan had mentioned. I'm very, very concerned for those particular kids for a long-term remote education. So many things, you know, the LNA programs, the cosmetology program. Luckily, the IT programs, those are golden remotely. But, um, a lot of the programs are really going to suffer. And that's kind of even a long-term launching pad for these kids in the rest of their life that target those kind of programs. Is there a chance that we can modify this particular proposal? Um, if we choose to go with it, to allow at the very least that group of students to have access to the hands-on curriculum that they need sooner than later, like starting in phase two or phase three?
But that, that is the, uh, the proposal we put forth was, you know, to get in the building as soon as possible, you know, when it's safe, when we have PPE. Just because, and I, I appreciate you saying that, many of our programs, you know, kids attain certifications, licensure. You know, they really need that hands-on experience and, and we're trying to get them into a labor market where there's demand for jobs. Our trades programs, for example, um, you know, our teachers did a great job recruiting, those, you know, construction, electrical, HVAC, this huge demand. And we want to make sure we're giving the kids the skills so they go out to the job market and they're able to use those tools and, and those equipment. So, yeah, we're, we're hopeful that we can do it as soon as possible, you know, and I'm working with my counterparts across the state and other centers. The New Hampshire DOE, um, and the current development bureau. And just trying to problem solve how we can give these kids, uh, this opportunity in a safe way as soon as possible.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. Um, let's see. My next question, um, is about, related to the security around Zoom meetings. So maybe this is for you, Mr. Rodriguez. Um, there's been a question about what would be the safest situation for all of our students and parents? Is Zoom the best option? Would it possibly be Google Meet, which I know they already use a lot in the Google Classroom suite? Or possibly Microsoft Teams, which I'm wondering if we actually already have access to since we use that as our, um, student software or our software for the district for the Microsoft Office?
Um, the answer would be we use, we can use all three. Uh, we do have that capability. I know Zoom since the beginning of the, uh, pandemic has increased their security tremendously. Um, I know that was a huge concern that Ms. Odin brought up, uh, back in, uh, March, April, May time. Um, but they have increased their security since that time. Google Meet is something that the classes, um, that teachers do use. And since we did purchase Office three sixty-five, uh, we do have the ability to use Teams within the district. So those three mediums of meeting, uh, can be used.
Is there, just on your personal opinion as a IT guru, um, do you think that there's like one of those three that's more user-friendly or has better, um, options or?
Yeah, I would, um, I would say in more of a classroom environment, I would, I would stick with probably Google Hangout or, or Google Meet, whatever. Um, just because every student uses Google already, um, and sort of the teachers and we, that's a simple sign on that they can use using their, uh, MSD forty-two, Google accounts the district provides. I, I'd see more administrators using, uh, Zoom, uh, with meetings and Microsoft Teams is something that's new to the district. And we, they can use it, but it's not widely used yet. So it's just an option that's out there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, working down my list here. Um, that actually kind of brings me to my next, which is a pretty so I'm going to skip that one and come back to that at the end because I think that'll be a big one. Um, all right, let's I'm curious about the ELL, the intensive needs and the IEPs and how we're going to service that remotely for an extended period of time. It did say in this proposal that due to the severity of student of their abilities, disabilities, requirements of social distancing, um, sorry, I'll skip down here. Some of the programs may be offered consistent two full days a week in-person instruction with services of three days remote. I think that's good. I would rather have all of our kids getting more face-to-face instruction time. What is the con, where do you qualify and may be offered? Is that on a student-by-student basis? Is that based on the program itself? And maybe Marsha Bagley, you can start me off because I have a follow-up question about ELL and IEPs.
So, um, the intensive needs students, well, students with IEPs, it's really, um, it's made, the decisions are made by the IEP teams because it's supposed to be an individualized decision. We did consider looking at having students attend four days a week. However, due to our bus sizes for special education, we can't physically bring more than half of our students in at a time. For the services because of our bus sizes. Uh, that's why we ended up with two days in person and full days, not the early release schedules.
So if there was a parent who needed, um, OT services or maybe their child isn't necessarily, um, considered an intensive needs student, but they have a clear IEP with, um, some learning disabilities, what would you? How are we going to give them those services?
It, it's based on their IEPs.
So you think you do, you do, are you confident that we can meet those needs remotely?
I'm confident that our staff can meet every student's needs remotely or in person. I, I'm confident that our staff did in the spring as well. Meet the majority of our students' needs.
Okay. Um, all right. So I guess my next question would be for Mr. Chopah. So the ELL program says that it's going to be focused on digital literacy, uh, for the first little while. Um, I assume that's probably because it's not just the students, but it's also the parents that are needing that extra piece of help. And honestly, in that part of the community, that's one of the communities I'm really concerned with losing touch with, um, through all this remote stuff. It's, it's really touching me in a way. So if we're focused on teaching them how to learn and how to have access to the digital technologies, how are we going to bridge that divide between what they're learning in the grade level material? Are we going to be giving those students extra support? So that, um, maybe bringing them in an extra day a week or a full day a week so that we can make sure that they're receiving both their digital literacy needs and also their general, um, education needs that they've, um, just to keep them on grade level so they're not slipping further and further behind?
Yeah, I'm quite concerned about the population as well. It's difficult to paint, uh, all ELLs with one, one brush because there's so many different circumstances that they come from. The particular students that we're talking about that need support in with digital literacy, um, we do plan on uh, making that the focus of the beginning of the school year and we kind of had a dry run with summer school. Uh, both, uh, secondary and elementary, that's what we made the focus of our summer school program to kind of figure out what worked and what didn't. And, um, luckily we had a, we had some really good success and we're going to be looking to replicate the programs that we set up over the summer and the, the success came from the amount of time that the teachers had to prepare remote learning. Really, um, both independently from each other, the secondary program contacted me and the elementary and we're just thrilled with how the program went. So that's a really good sign. The other end of this is the parent contact and that's, you know, that's the other, that's where we're going to be relying really heavily on Yanni. And interpreters, you know, we, it's nice to have a, you know, our, our surveys and translated forms and everything. But a lot of our parents, you know, might, may not access those. So that's where the personal touch and reaching out to, uh, those parents comes into play. So we plan on doing that. Um, as far as how do you, it's tough to, you can't do both at once. You can't, you can't focus on digital literacy and try to keep somebody up at, at a great level. So it's, it's, you just gotta, you know, you gotta take one step at a time. And once they get the digital literacy skills, then they can start accessing the, um, the academics. So if you think about in ELL, I mean, this setup is so difficult. They have, if you have, if they're not familiar with technology, that's barrier number one, language is barrier number two. And then just the craziness of remote learning is number three. So we, I've contacted a number of the ELL teachers and we're planning on meeting, um, probably starting next week and give everybody a break after summer school just said it. And we're going to continue planning. I've reached out to, um, Goodwill, we're going to have an AmeriCorps volunteer, um, working with the ELL program. And hopefully the idea is to use that, that gentleman as a, uh, like a digital literacy tutor. I've spoken to the Boys and Girls Club. Uh, we have some things that we're trying to work out. Hopefully they do. So it's, it's not just going to be a district thing. We're really reaching out across the community to, to, to address this population because you're correct. They do deserve concern, uh, because if we didn't, they would really, really slip behind.
Thank you. I really appreciate you putting all that, um, extra focused effort on, um, that particular population in our community. Um, okay, so let's see. My next question is, um, we haven't really gotten a good description of what remote learning is going to be like, how it's going to improve. We haven't seen any curriculum. We haven't seen, um, modifications for teachers. We haven't really gotten, we haven't really dove in to, um, talk about how this can improve compared to the spring when we are talking about crisis management. Now we're talking about, you know, we have seniors that are going out of our district this year. We have, um, kindergartners that are coming through. We have middle schoolers that are going to transition up to, um, you know, being more and more independent. And we're asking parents to fill out a survey for how their kids are going to learn for the next five months based on almost no information. It do, I would like to hear where we're at on curriculum development for online learning. And how we're going to do consistency through the district. And then like a checks and balances system. Um, I know that some of the complaints from teachers during the previous problem was they weren't seeing enough, um, contact from administration on and guidance, you know, they didn't feel well-supported necessarily. And I'd like to know how we can have those administrators checking in more frequently. What the curriculum like in a day is going to look like for any age group? And what, um, and some confirmation that it's going to be consistent and equitable through this district. And anyone, I know that's a lot, but I think it's really important if we're asking somebody to make a decision whether to stay in the school district or not in the next five days.
I think, at least I can talk a little bit about the high school. We've given, uh, the opportunity, we talked, we heard from teachers. They want FaceTime with their kids and opportunities to communicate. Uh, so we've built that into this plan through the remote process where they're going to have that hour on a daily basis with kids for that direct instruction. Like our teachers are pretty adept at, you know, working through the curriculum and finding ways to, that curriculum. And we haven't, you know, in the past said you have to teach a, a certain piece of the content in a certain way. Um, and I don't think we're going to do that in this case either. We're going to allow them to have the freedom to be able to do and teach however they want. Um, as long as they're covering the content and, and covering the curriculum, they're going to be able to get to that point, um, at the end of the semester or end of the quarter. We're obviously going to provide them with professional development and tools to learn how to utilize the technology a little bit better. But I think in, in terms of how they decide to do it is going to be kind of up to them. And then in terms of us reaching out, when we were, administrators were making phone calls to parents, phone calls to kids. Um, calling, following up all the time, same thing with guidance counselors. You know, they were constantly on the phone. We were, we were reaching out every day trying to get kids across the finish line to, to graduate, um, to pass that class. Um, and to make their way through. So, um, you know, the data that I, the information that I heard at least, um, didn't show that we were struggling to kind of do that and to reach out and support teachers.
Just to, to build on that, just, our focus has been on the reopening plan, but it doesn't mean the work isn't ongoing. We've had teachers meeting over the course of the summer to make adjustments and acquire resources. Our head teachers, World Language has been meeting. They acquired new resources for teaching remotely, Unified Arts, Social Studies. Elementary has some new resources for kindergarten and math. So we're slowly making those adjustments and building them in here. But there are schedules and sample resources that are included in the reopening plan as a beginning to what parents and teachers and students can expect.
And I would just add, Ms. Brown, that if you take a look at slides 18 through, particularly slide 19, I think that's a really captures what that might look like remotely for the elementary school. We also talked earlier about having some PD online. I think that there was different levels of entry and preparedness for a different online resources. So this is a, you know, an opportunity for us to enhance that preparedness. But I also think that this is an ongoing process in terms of refining. No one wants to start, and ideally, you know, we all want to be back in some way. But this is, in terms of just the epidemiology, this is the best way, the safest way in terms of what we're hearing from health officials. But I, I, I think, I believe that Dr. McKinney and, and some of the elements coming out of the secondary addressed that question, particularly around screen time and, and some, some suggested activities. Like, for example, during, during the middle school project, that when we first started, we tried to do all seven subjects in periods. And we found that that was pretty laborious and difficult to, to, to navigate. So in the presentation you heard today, when we talk about remote, well, we're talking about cutting that down to maybe four and then having a rotated basis. So I think some of the questions that were, that were broached around this remote and hybrid, certainly, we always want to make, maintain a level of flexibility, but also the social, emotional health of our kids as well. So by making those slight modifications in the schedule, that might seem to bring some consistency, but also relief in terms of expectations.
Thank you. And I am glad that we started addressing the schedule for the middle schoolers. I think taking that half-day schedule and then trying to shove seven classes in it is completely unreasonable for, for executive functioning for a middle school student. But that does actually transition me nicely into my next major question about this. The half-day schedule in general, it's gonna be really hard on parents, especially hard on parents with kids in multiple schools. I think it's gonna be hard on teachers to have to do one type of teaching in the morning and a second type of teaching in the afternoon. And once kids are exposed in a school classroom, they're already exposed. Why does it matter if they're there for three hours or there for six hours? Because I'm very concerned, and honestly, it, it is sucking me in. I think it's not great at any of the levels, that half-day. I don't like it even for our regular early release, to be honest, during the regular school year. It's not, I think they're not the best educational days. But especially under this circumstance, you've got them in for half an hour, a half a day. And then the middle school, it just keeps jumping out at me, maybe because I have a middle schooler, one hour a day every other week is what they're getting with their teachers. I don't understand how they can actually provide, they, they could, I guess, maybe do a test that day, like an assessment. Meaningful instruction or FaceTime with those kids is so important. And I understand that you're trying to make sure that they're getting all the credits that they deserve and trying to accommodate as many scenarios as possible. But I think it could be really fixed very easily by just extending those half-days to a full day. Then you can make sure they're getting FaceTime with every single one of their teachers. Quite honestly, I still think one day is not enough. But if that's all you're gonna give me, I'm gonna beg you for a full day. So that's just something for consideration on modifying of this schedule. I think it's... The idea of actual valuable instruction time is very limited under this model. And all right, so I will wrap it up. I really appreciate, appreciate the last thing, but this is, so that's why I saved it till last, because it's pretty big. I, in all honesty, unless we change one specific line in this contract, cannot vote for this proposal. It says these phases will continue until it is safe to return to school in person 100%. But we have, we're using the word epidemiology a lot. And I believe that. We came up with these dates months ago. I think that we made the right decision to close schools when we did in the spring. But there's no, we haven't actually put anything measurable. We haven't put any SMART goals in here. We haven't got anything referencing what epidemiology chart we're using. Are we using the advice of one person from the city? That's fine. Then put their, their name in here and say, when so-and-so says it's time to go, let's do this. Are we using a model that, that's based on how many cases of transmission? Are we basing it on severity of symptoms? There is nothing measurable in this entire packet. We have a color-coded chart, which would be great, except it doesn't actually reference anything in society that anybody else is using. It's just a chart with colors on it. And I, and the people did a lot of hard work on this. If there's nothing that we can reference to dangle a carrot in front of parents to say, hey, you know what, someday, we're gonna let your kids go back to school, then this is a lot of work for nothing. And I really think it's very important that we put some kind of measurable marking, like system in this plan. That said, anybody got any ideas?
Well, I... Did you have a chance to review the chart that's in the report that indicates? So I guess what my reaction is, you know, or, you know, certainly, you know, I, that, that's our, our draft approach to what I think you're referring to. Certainly, like, as we said, as I started this conversation at the beginning, this is organic. This isn't set in stone. This isn't something, it's not a, a contract. If there's something that pops up that, that, you know, that could clarify or make us stronger, but also keep our kids safe, we're happy to do so. You know, we've, we've used our, our, you know, Bobby Bagley, you know, the nurses and what, what they've recommended to us, along with some public and state guidelines. But certainly, you know, we're, we're not a, I, I think that we, we have some good people that we can rely on to get us that information. I'm not sure what type of, like, when you mentioned a SMART goal, you know, are you referencing?
The word measurable. We don't have anything to measure this system against. There's nothing that says, when we get to this point in our community epidemiology, when we hear from the epidemiologist, when we get there, what? What, what point? Where, when do we get to change phases? Because quite honestly, these phases right now, even the one going from phase one to phase two to phase three, coming out of the initial remote, they're just arbitrary dates. We could have a huge spike next week. Or we could have a huge drop. I don't know. The only place it's doing well is actually hockey. That's the only sport that's going, that nobody's got it so far. So maybe cold weather's gonna be better. Who knows? I, no, I'm sorry. That's not nothing to joke about. But I'm saying, we don't have any, and I think Bobby Bagley's done an amazing job of keeping us informed and keeping the community informed and keeping our, us realistic about the fact that, you know, COVID-19 isn't going away next week, and it's not going away next month. But we all, we have to be cautious. We have to wear our masks. We have to make sure we're protecting people. But at the same time, the, when we get to a zero transmission point, that's not what closing down was about. It was about flattening the curve. So that's, I guess, that's where I say, I think we need something in this document that says, when we're at this point, this is the, what we're gonna be in. When we're at this other point, that's what we're gonna be in.
I think Ms. Bagley had a response.
Yeah, so you bring up a really, really good point, Ms. Brown. And we actually talked about that today in our, with our incident response team. And so we looked at some metrics, and we looked at some percentages of what we wanted to see that would be, you know, a, a point for us when we would look at what's happening with the school. So all of our planning for the next few weeks is around the education that we want to get out to parents to get them prepared for going back to school. So what we looked at, and so this is not set in stone right now, but what we looked at right now was a 5% decrease or if we saw a 5% increase in the numbers as we go over a seven-day period. So we looked at seven days, we looked at 10 days, we looked at 14 days. We don't want to stretch it out too long because in a 14-day period, you might have a lot of things happen, you know, in the school setting if there is, we start to see numbers go up. So we've been having those conversations this week, and we're working on what's gonna be our striking point for when we say, okay, we need to start cutting something back. We need to investigate with the school what they might need to change. They need to go back down from 50 to 25 to 10%. So we're actually having those conversations right now. And our team was going to look at and see, what are some other numbers that we need to look at? As far as it, is it 5%? Is it 2.5% based on the population of, of, of students that are gonna be in the school at a particular time? So we are working on that. And our plan was to meet, and we were gonna have Gina and some of the school nurses meet with us on that as well so that we could, so that we could determine what would be the point? What would be the metric? That would be when we could, when we would say, okay, so you're gonna have to scale this back? Or for us to say, okay, so what's happening different in the school now that we need to change? Because we're starting to see we're creeping up on that 5% or 2.5%. So we are having those conversations at the health department, and we'll be getting some information back to the school with regards to that kind of metric. So we realized that wasn't there ourselves. We saw that too, because we read the plan this morning. We looked at the plan this morning. And so we came up with some, some strategies. We're not gonna have every single answer or solution to everything because, as you mentioned, things are gonna keep changing. The data's gonna keep going up. We just discovered this week, looking at where the 12% is up from the 8%, right? So we know that there's some things happening as to why we're seeing that. So as we watch things, and I think that's why Dr. Mosley was saying the epi, the epi, the epi, because that's really gonna help us determine, like, what, what, when are we gonna get to that, that, that pivotal point where we have to say, all right, looks like we're gonna have to shift things back? What we don't want is to shut, you know, shut things down because we do realize how important, you know, how kids learn with that contact, with their teachers, you know, with each other. We do realize how important that is. But we also want to make sure that we're doing things in the safest way possible. So our plan is, because there are some schools that are opening right now in the South, right? So we're watching to see what happens with those schools that are opening right now. So it's gonna be an ongoing type of kind of dialogue situation before you get to a final, I don't think we're gonna get to zero in like the next three months. So we know that that's not gonna be a metric that we're gonna set.
Thank you, Ms. Bagley. I appreciate that. And thank you all for listening to my questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bagley. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Ms. Brown, might I suggest that you speak to Dr. McKinney about having, at the next curriculum meeting, or perhaps the one in September, a bit of an update about what the curriculum looks like for remote learning as teachers go through the PDE and are starting to craft specific plans? I, I know we're all interested in, in hearing a little bit more about like the day in the life of a remote learner. I know for myself, the K through two reading skills, I have no idea how one teaches that over remote. I just don't know. So, so it'll be really interesting to me if you and Dr. McKinney could put that on a curriculum committee meeting sometime.
That would be my pleasure. Thank you, Ms. Raymond.
So thanks so much. Okay, so I'm watching the time, but we still have several members who haven't gotten a chance to ask their questions. I have Ms. Odin and Ms. Bishop next, then Mr. Guarino. Then I would like to give Ms. Timmons a chance because she hasn't spoken at all this evening. And then we'll see where we're at. I know for myself, my list of questions, I don't know if people can see them. I've crossed almost all of them off because other people have asked them. So yay. Hopefully, we'll get more brief as we go. So Ms. Odin, go ahead.
Okay, I just want to thank everybody that was on the task force, all of you who have worked on it. And I have to say, the emails I've received from all of our stakeholders appreciate all the work that went into the plan. They, they said, you know, it's obvious that a lot of work went into this. So thank you all. A couple of questions that have stood out in some of the emails I've received. One is about cleaning on Friday. And the question is, why not clean on Wednesday between the two groups? The A group and the B group coming in rather than on Friday?
Well, we're actually gonna clean every day, Dodi. There's, you know, the whole idea of doing a deep clean, you'll have a little more time, but most of the cleaning that we'll do, we'll clean every night. So I don't think it matters as much whether it's a Wednesday or a Friday.
And what will you be doing on Friday that you won't be doing on Wednesday?
Probably just the, the types of things that we weren't able to get done during the week. But they won't be, you know, the whole cleaning all the surfaces, cleaning all the bathrooms, those sorts of things are going to be done every single night. Where we might, we might do some sweeping or some other types of things that we didn't get done during the week because it's all about, you know, fighting off the, the virus.
Okay, thank you. This one might be for Marsha Bagley. A couple of parents have asked if their children have some special services, whether it's speech, OTPT, can that be done outside the school day so they're not missing the limited amount of time for academics?
Those decisions really need to be made by the IEP team. We still have staff contracts to consider as well. So it just, it depends on the circumstances.
Thank you. What, what I understand is parents are supposed to take their children's temperature before they bring them to school. My experience from, from teaching, often kids come to school sick. I would guess that we have a lot of parents that don't have a thermometer. Why are we not providing? I, I know they have those thermometers that you don't even touch the forehead. Why are we not testing our students when they come into school?
So this was a direction from Dr. Chen. And I think that we want the responsibility to be on the parent also. But what we're gonna do for those children who do not have thermometers, we will be, the school nurse will follow through with that. So we have a plan, a whole plan intact for that also. I think it's the quantity too. Just think of the high school and, and the middle schools, the, the large number of students of screening. So, but that's all taken into consideration. I think that's, we're taking direction from the DHHS and Dr. Chen. And that's what the, the plan was proposed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
My last question and comment. I know from my experience, building relationships with students is the most important thing you do as a teacher. We have preschool, kindergarten, first grade, second grade students coming in. I think they really need a time where they can come in and meet their teacher in person. I know we received an email from a middle school teacher and he was talking about the, the importance of building a sense of community and forming relationship in middle school. And then this afternoon, we received an email from one of our high school teachers that had gathered with probably 15 of their peers. And they were concerned about building the relationships with their students. And their suggestion was, it's nice weather. We could socially distance outside. If we needed to, we could put up a tent. Matter of fact, one of the teachers volunteered to bring up a, a big covering. Would that be possible? I, I, I just, from my experience, I just don't know how you can teach effectively without having any type of personal relationship or a meeting with your students. So is there any way we could think about that?
I don't, we, I would just say that having outside, having outside opportunities for our kids is, is probably one of the most safest ways. It's again, it's scheduling it, it's coordinating it. It's making sure that, 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 that we have that capacity to do it. You know, certain class, having outside classrooms is part of the most ideal, but we just have to do it in a way that, that, that coordinates our, our services. But, you know, I, I, you know, we, there's, there's a lot, there's 15 students and two teachers or one student. We still have to think about, you know, the other 2,400 students or the north, the south. I don't know what email it is. I think that, I think that that question, can we do it, can be answered by having that discussion with the building principals and maybe Nate and Keith can, can, can work within the staff to provide not just one class, but several classes. So I think there's a lot of possibilities out there. But I, I, I think that when we talk about capacity, maybe that's something we can do. You know, the first couple of months of school and then shut it down and then maybe early April. So I, I, I think there's a lot of possibility to do a lot of great things and creative things of, of, of what you just mentioned is, is on the table. We have to do that. Sure.
Thank you. And they didn't, they didn't want it for weeks. They were hoping at least a week where they could get to know their students in person. So I thought that was valid. I thought it was creative. I know there are places that rent tents around here and they even come in and put them up for you. So I just, I just would, would like us to consider that because I, I really do think that building relationships at any level is, is critical to good education. And I guess my, my last thing would be, have we thought about trying to set up some type of daycare for those students who, whose parents have to work if they come into school for half a day? Do we have any way that we might be able to harness a support system for them so that they can maybe stay in an area in the gym or cafeteria socially distanced and get some help? And help our families who have to work?
I'll just jump in quickly. I've had a series of conversations with our community partners, Mike Affenberg, Joe Manzoli at the Y, the United Way. All the community and city partners are ready to step in and facilitate. They actually have a number of hundred volunteers ready to do a community homework club. So we have, you know, like in Nashua, when you ask for help, a lot of people come running. So I think it's just a matter of communicating what we're going to be doing and then can join us and wrap their services around our school schedule.
Thank you. So what I'm hearing, we're looking at trying to provide some type of support for these families?
Yes, we've talked about that. Even, you know, families, some schools call it like open house hours where you can come in and get extra help. Or if you don't have a quiet workspace where you can do your homework at the high school level, you can come in and find a space where you can do some of your work. So Boys and Girls Club, Adult Learning Center, I've had conversations with all them. So they're waiting to hear what we're doing and then they're ready to get to work.
Okay, thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
I'm done at this point. To give other people a chance.
Thank you, Dottie. You also stole one of my questions, so I'm going to cross that out. Thank you so much, Dr. McKinney, for reaching out to our community partners. I love how Nashua has community resources and everybody comes together to support what's best for our kids and our families. And I just, I can't say enough about all of the organizations that we work with. So yay. So the next person I have is Jen Bishop.
Hi, thanks. This actually times in perfectly because my questions surrounded not just teachers and students, but the parents. This entire program is pretty much reliant on having an adult at home. Which can be pretty near impossible for a lot of our, a lot of our families. This also kind of barrels back to something that I think Mr. Rodriguez was talking about earlier in regards to the internet and cameras and doing the online instruction. I'm wondering if, because this is so reliant on parents being there and helping out. If there was a way to accommodate parents' schedules by allowing flexibility of when the kids, because I know we have a schedule. I like it. I'm just, I'm worried that there are some families that it's really not going to work for. But if there was an option to pre-tape lectures so that students had the opportunity to view what their teachers were telling them or the assignments that they were giving them with the parents' home on the parent's schedule. Because, I mean, big picture, if we don't have people working, we're not going to have the money to pay for all of this because we won't be able to collect any taxes. So I was wondering if there is a way to be flexible in regards to the remote learning, if people choose to do fully remote learning, to get those teachers the, the internet, the proper equipment to allow for that flexibility?
I'll just share a couple of things. I, I think we've been flexible in the past and when those concerns come up, I would ask that parents talk to the teachers, whether it's students at the high school working during the day or night and they can't get their work done on a timely fashion. Or to the elementary level when we had one device with multiple, you know, siblings trying to share it. So we found ways to work around that. I think the struggle we're having is the supply chain in terms of getting the infrastructure and the materials we need to live stream. But a lot of our curricular resources now have student facing videos where kids can log on and get math instruction, reading instruction, some literacy instruction. And I get it, I'm a parent, two or three kids, it's not the same. You're not going to get the full school day. But we do think with two days of live instruction, we can teach kids some independent things they can practice at home and then come back and we can assess them in person. So again, I think it's supporting the building, talking to the teachers, talking to the principals and making those accommodations as necessary. It's going to be a long year, I understand.
Yeah. And it's not, and I, and I think you guys put a lot of hard work in. It certainly shows in all of this and I'm not, I don't want to be perceived as dogging this plan. I just want to make sure that somebody is, is speaking up and asking on behalf of the parents who this is going to be absolutely unrealistic to accomplish. The other question that I had, it's more of a broader, but broader question is, does anybody know anything about what's going on? And I mean, I know that the, the unemployment stuff is ending, has ended. Does anybody have a pulse on if there's going to be any kind of federal help for parents to continue to stay home? Which I know isn't necessarily school district, but I think people would be more on board with picking a plan if they know what their resources are going to look like.
I haven't heard anything most recently. I know there was still discussion with the House and the Senate. I, recently, I, I, I haven't heard anything that.
Such a disservice. So that was all of my questions. But I did want to say in regards to the thermometers, one of the Medicaid options, I don't know if it's WellSense or Healthy Families, has an over the counter card instead of the, the bicycle helmets, the car seats. Each Medicaid program has a different like tiered down effect. One of them has an over the counter card that gets money deposited on it when you do well person visits. And you can buy thermometers with that over the counter card. At any of CVS, Rite Aid, all of those pharmacies, Walmart, you just have to, there's a list of things you can buy and a certain brand you have to stick with. So the option is there for the families that don't necessarily have the finances to get their thermometer, some like remote controls. That's not what you take your temperature with. So the option is there and hopefully it's not too dire of a circumstance, but that option is present. And that was it for tonight.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bishop. And I, I sincerely appreciate you bringing up the hardships on parents. It's going to be very challenging, even with our community partners for a lot of families out there. And I hope that parents are taking a look at their village and also reaching out to their principals if they have questions or concerns so that the principals can point them in the right direction. So I had Ms. Timmons next, but she left the meeting. Mr. Gao, did Ms. Timmons's question get asked?
Yeah, it did. Odin asked it, so that worked out well.
Okay, great. Perfect. And then Mr. Guarino?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I'm not going to take up too much time. But I want to thank the board members who asked a lot of questions because any questions that I did have got answered. But I just want to make a quick comment. The problem that I see is to keep students, teachers, families safe through what we have going on, which is a terrible pandemic. And from what I've seen since March, the decisions that we've made in our district and also in our city, we helped flatten the curve. So people should be aware of that. The problem now is to get on with business of education under extremely difficult conditions. It's going to be hard for students, teachers and parents. So I'm not going to pretend that it's going to be easy. It's going to be hard. What I see is a good plan for us to, for our district to be part of the solution and not part of the problem. This is a flexible plan and what Ms. Bobby Bagley has said earlier and the fact that our superintendent is working closely with the city health department gives me a lot of confidence in moving forward with this plan. Plus, I know a lot of people put a lot of time and hard work in this plan and there's more work to do. So I just want to thank everybody that was involved with this plan and who put it together. And thank you very much. And, and like I said, I have a lot of confidence in it. And if we need to change it as, as the conditions change, then we have to be flexible. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Guarino. And then Mr. Gao and Mr. Norris both said they had follow-up questions. I have something very brief to say. And then I think Ms. Gilio had something brief to say. And then I think we will let everyone go. So thank you all for staying for so long. Mr. Gao and then Mr. Norris?
Thank you. I'll make this super quick. So I'm wondering, I know we have like the, the additional funding and the grants and everything to purchase computers. But from my understanding, there's some issues in the supply chain on getting the computers actually by the first day of school. So I'm wondering for those without Chromebooks right now, what are we going to do about those students?
I can guarantee we would not give them for the first day of school. So what we're going to do is what we did in the spring is based on need, family in this, in the student would be supplied a Chromebook based on needs. So principals would be handing out Chromebooks during the time of picking up non-electronic material. So our, our IT staff is disassembling carts right now and making them available to building principals for, for said distribution, starting the 27th of August.
So just to follow up with that, like if a family has like three children and like they'll be provided with only one Chromebook, right?
There's an expectation that we don't, we don't want to, we don't want students to be on the, the computer for eight hours a day. That's something that, that was go to, goes with the fatigue that Dr. McKinney was speaking of early in the presentation. So this would have to be up to principal's discretion on how many Chromebooks are lent out per family. And Keith and Nate, you know, we've talked about this at length in the, in the spring and we're talking about it again in the fall. We don't want to undersupply students. We don't want to undersupply families, but we also don't want to oversupply just because of we have a finite supply.
So is there anything that us students can do to kind of like help, I guess, other students who don't have access to resources? Is there any way we can like, I don't know, like maybe like sit in a park or something and like, I don't know, watch, be, watch the same class together or something?
That's a good question.
That sounds kind of crazy.
No, it doesn't sound crazy at all. I, I think this is a time to get creative, but also stay safe. So these are definitely things that, you know, I think every school is going to consider and, and ways to, because not every student has internet access as well. So that's a, that's a whole separate issue in itself.
It's two things. I'm sorry, that we do have Comcast is continuing operating, opening the hotspots throughout the city, correct? Right?
Correct, yeah, to the end of the 2020.
All right. And the other thing to your question, Josh, I think that's a creative idea. I would dovetail with the saying, make sure you practice social distancing if you're going to share. But sure, yeah, it's great.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Gao. Mr. Norris?
Right, I've got a couple of questions, but I'll try to keep it quick. So just, Josh gave me another question, but um, can we guarantee that every family is going to have at least one Chromebook for the beginning of remote learning? Because if some, if a family doesn't have access to technology, you just can't remote learn, but.
It's again, based on need. If a family needs a Chromebook, they will be provided a Chromebook.
So we have enough that every family can get one that needs one?
We, in the spring, we distributed about, at the initial distribution was around 1,700 and that grew over time as, as devices broke and they needed to be replaced or they were malfunctioning. But if we go by the numbers that we had in the spring, we should be fine.
Okay.
Yep.
So I guess moving on, this is kind of touching on a little bit what Ms. Brown was talking about. But the early release schedule, I, I think there's some flaws in that. First off, just looking at it from the teacher's perspective, I don't think you can expect a teacher to adequately teach in the high school level four classes in school and four classes out of school. I, I don't think we can just expect that. I think teacher is going to be working till midnight to try to make that happen. And also, I was just comparing kind of if the high school were to go all online and you had hour a day Zoom classes, just for example, for each class. You could have four hours a day for five days a week. That's 20 hours of Zoom instruction time if we were to go all online and all, all remote, all over Zoom. And now we're basically sacrificing all of our potential Zoom time because we can't expect teachers to do Zoom classes and do in-person classes. They're going to have office hours and things, but it's not the same. So we're sacrificing all of our potential Zoom time for only three hours of in-person learning. And obviously you can't substitute anything for in-person learning, but like just something to chew on, is that too much to give up for such small amount of time per week? That's 45 minutes per class for the whole week. Like I think there has to be some other way where we either can get more Zoom time or more in-person time. But right now, I don't know how that's going to work. Just, that's just a rhetorical question. But also going off of kind of what Josh was saying, so the full online students who choose to stay full remote after we go into the hybrid model and at the beginning, how is the structure going to work? I know you talked about you got to have class from nine, class at nine, class at 10 or whatever. Is that going to be Zoom classes? Is that going to be just logging on? Is that going to be completing an assignment at that time? I don't know who can answer that, but. I don't know who can answer that, but...
I think those are, Stephen, those are some of the details that we're going to work on, figure it out. I think going back to your question kind of before that is, we almost envision, you know, once you go to the hybrid model, that it's almost a flipped classroom-type model and you're working with your kids on some of the most difficult concepts. You're giving them their tests, but you're still providing them with that instruction piece. And even, you know, in the remote setting, you may not have your kids logged in for a full hour. There may be twenty minutes of instruction and then they break out and to do some breakout groups. They may be logging off to do some work and logging back in to meet with the teacher if they get stuck on some problems. So there's kind of a variety of different things that you can look at in that regard too. And depends on, on what the teacher's style is and how they want to work through those types of things. But as far as the remote piece, and I mean, I, I almost think that, you know, that would be with that hybrid piece where if you are, if a teacher is posting their work online, that they're able to work with kids in the classroom on those difficult concepts. And then all students are working through the rest of the week on those other concepts and other, other tasks, assessments, projects, work that you're doing on a daily basis.
Yeah, because I know I've been talking to a couple of teachers who have family friends with and everything and they're, they, they still looking for some direction on how it's going to look like. Are they expected to only teach a fourth of their curriculum because they're teaching only a fourth of every day? Or they're just slightly, just really, nobody knows what's going on now, but I think we will figure that out hopefully soon.
Yeah, and I think the goal, you know, in going to the hybrid piece is to get kids back into the school and get people back in the buildings, you know. And you've got to do it slowly to make sure that, you know, we're not, we're not going too fast. I'd much rather err on the side of caution and, you know, have nothing happen and, and say, oh, you know, we were a little bit slower than some of these other districts that opened and do it the other way and open up too fast and, and everybody starts getting sick and then we're all remote again and back to square one.
Yeah, I agree. So my next question's for Bobby Bagley. So I know I've just been hearing a lot of different information about how long COVID withstands or stays on a surface. Because I know we've been talking about a cleaning day, but then I've heard that it only, at the beginning, I was hearing it stayed on surfaces for seventy-two hours. And then less than that, some people said an hour. I don't know what the most recent information is that because we could avoid a cleaning day maybe if we know that COVID-19 does not stay for twenty-four hours and wouldn't be there the next day, or I don't know.
Yeah, that's a great question. And from some of the things that I've read, it depends on the, the material of the surface that, the life time or cycle of the, the virus itself. So some surfaces, it, it dies really quickly and some surfaces, it lives a little bit longer. So the cleaning is the best thing to do to just mitigate that altogether. Copper surfaces, it seemed to have a shorter, I'm not sure if it was shorter or longer on copper, but it was like, wow, this, this is really something else. But there's a study, we have an article for everything and we can send you, that you can read up on that. Some, there's so much information that sometimes it's hard to keep all this stuff, you know, in, in your head. That was early on when we were looking at the surfaces and the timeline of how long the virus lived on certain surfaces. But what we did find was that it's better to clean the surface and then use the proper disinfectant the way that the manufacturer's label says to use it. So, but if you want the details of that article, I can send you that one too.
Thank you. So it's your recommendation that we have a day that we do an intense cleaning more than just what we do on the other four days?
Yeah, that would be good. Especially with so many people in there, yeah.
Yeah. All right. So I guess my last thing is just, I want to reiterate that we need to figure out something as soon as possible about what we're going to do if and when somebody gets COVID going to school. Because it's inevitable that somebody's going to get it. We know that cases are rising right now. And like, we don't want to just be caught off guard and say, okay, wait, do we shut down school if one person gets it? And I think that also, like, what's our measurable goal or what's our measurable thing to say? If we get ten cases, if we get twenty cases, do we shut down? I think we've got to somehow establish that because right now it's kind of up in the air. And if we start getting cases, we really don't know what to do. Thank you.
Don't worry, Mr. Norris, we have that under control.
Thank you, thank you. And I think Dr. Mosley answered that a bit earlier. He had a very specific answer. So I have a couple of things. The first thing is that I went back into my Appendix A1 and counted the number of days, and we do have a hundred and eighty. So that's a relief. We still have a hundred and eighty days. So hopefully, Dr. Mosley can speak with the unions. I don't think that we have anyone here, well, if anyone objects to Dr. Mosley speaking to the unions about MOUs, please speak now or hold your peace. I see nobody, so hopefully that'll be the next step. The other, just briefly, I wanted to say thank you to everybody who came out tonight, who spent all this time listening to our questions, answering our questions, providing us details. I think it, this document was long and I had a lot of questions and they all got asked tonight for the most part. So I feel really good about that. The last thing that I just wanted to say was over the last two and a half years that I've been on the board, Mr. Guarino says all the time that we're in the business of educating kids. That's what we do. And that, I always think of Mr. Guarino when I hear that, that's like his quote. And he's right. And I think that we are in the business of educating kids and we need to be academically rigorous. But I looked up the city charter and the charter, Section 74, establishes the Board of Education and our duties. And it says, "The city of Nashua shall continue to constitute one school district and the school committee of said city shall be styled the Board of Education. It shall perform all duties as the school committees in towns required by law to perform and ha, and shall have the power to protect the health of children attending the public schools of the city when exposed to danger from any cause connected with the schools, whether the cause be unsanitary conditions, exposure to contagious disease, association with those who are afflicted with sickness such as commonly communicable to others or other causes." You know, "General appropriations for the maintenance of the schools of the city shall be deemed available to meet any expenses incurred by the Board of Education under this provision for the protection of the health of the children attending the public schools." And I thought that was really interesting because our job is to provide education. But according to the charter, our job is also, and perhaps even foremost, to protect the public health of our kids. And I, I appreciate that we are being careful and thoughtful in that regard. So thank you, Dr. Mosley, and thank you to everybody who worked on this plan. And Ms. Gilio, you get the last word tonight?
Yes, I do. And thank you for sharing that. That was very interesting, Madam President. Okay, so I am, as I am sure we all are, deeply grateful to the twenty-six task force members and the one hundred and seventy-four members of the working subgroups, which is a total of two hundred dedicated representatives who gave so much time during the last seven weeks to create the document that has been presented to you this evening. This plan was crafted with deep regard for the safety and educational needs of all our students, staff and community members. It is not necessary to dwell on the incredible challenges this group was tasked with. Everyone watching tonight is completely aware of them. My gratitude also extends to the students and their families, the Nashua Public Schools staff and our community members who have been so very patient these past few months. The plan represented to you tonight is not perfect. That would be an impossible task, given the challenges we faced with COVID-19. But it is a plan in which I have great confidence, one that will enable us to move forward to begin the 2020, 2021 school year and allow us the flexibility that we will need to fulfill our educational responsibilities while keeping our citizens safe. And if Ms. Kinsella, Kinsella could pull up the calendar as proposed for our new school year, it starts, says, school starts on September eighth. We should have all received a copy of that, like this. Thank you very much. So tonight, I would make a motion to the full Board of Education to approve the revised 2020, 2021 school district calendar supplement to accommodate teaching and learning in hybrid Model Two and remote Model Three during the COVID pandemic. The Nashua School District will continue to monitor the pandemic and follow the guidelines of local public health officials to keep our students, staff and the Nashua community safe and healthy. Our Superintendent, Dr. Mosley, will report to the Board of Education on a regular basis about the progress of teaching and learning in Models Two and Model Three as we move forward through the school year.
I would like to second that motion.
Thank you for calling out there, Mr. Guarino, because I can't see anybody. I see four people at a time right now. Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. I move to table this question until after public comments on Wednesday.
A second?
So as we learned recently, tabling is not debatable. Mr. Guarino, can you call the roll and the motion to table?
Okay, on the motion to table, Mr. Guarino votes no. Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Ms. Zim, are you still with us? Sandra? I don't think, she's not answering. Move on.
Okay, Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
No.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Ms. Timmons is not with us.
Okay, is Ms. Zim, maybe I can get her? Oh, okay. One, two, three, four, five yeses and one, two noes. So the motion to table carries.
Thank you. And again, I really feel strongly that, that we need public comments before we make any kind of vote regarding the proposal. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kinsella, for stopping, sharing your, your screen. At this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Gilio. On the roll, Mr. Guarino?
Okay, on the motion to adjourn, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zim? I think Ms. Zim, oh, Ms. Zim is still here. I'll come back to her. Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Zim, can you, can you hear? I have seven yeses and zero noes. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you all. We're adjourned. I will see everybody Wednesday. The phone number to call in for public comments is posted on the page.